Mr. Chenoweth.
Present.
Hayes.
Present.
Huth.
Pat.
Present.
Otto.
Present.
Wayland.
Wyman.
Here.
Mayor Sathwaite.
Here. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wayland did call this afternoon and said he's ill and not going to be able to make the meeting tonight.
Okay, we'll record that as excused. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? There's no additions or corrections to the agenda. Do we have a staff report?
Members asked last week for an update from the police chief on events that occurred a couple of Friday nights ago, Champaign County Fair. Given an update on that, we appreciate it.
Good evening.
Evening.
On the 23rd of July, which was a Friday at evening, the Champaign County Sheriff's Department had an altercation to occur on their midway involving twenty to thirty young people, at which time they did make one arrest. And because of perceived hostility on the part of the crowd, they called for assistance. Urbana, along with Champaign, UBI, and Illinois State Police did respond. We did disperse the crowd with no additional arrests being made. And of course, both Champaign and Urbana more or less had to disperse the crowd whilst it was out of the fairgrounds. Because the Champaign County Fair is a Champaign government function, and the Champaign County Sheriff's Department is the primary agency. We were there in a support role for them. We were able to disperse the crowd as it progressed northwest from that area, along with Champaign, without any additional arrests. And on Saturday night, an even larger crowd. An event occurred involving some forty to eighty, and these are crowd estimate numbers only, which did result in about five arrests by the Champaign County Sheriff's Department. And again, the Champaign PD, Urbana, UBI, and the state of Illinois State Police did respond. And again, we did disperse the crowd without any additional arrests being made. Prior to and during our arrival, on the part of the responding police agencies, several of the persons in the crowd had to be sprayed with pepper spray in order to keep them at bay from the officers attempting to make the arrest. As a result of that, on that Sunday night, as a part of our mutual aid agreement arrangement, Urbana, along with Champaign, UBI, and Illinois State Police did augment their staffing, which prior to these incidents on nighttime consisted of thirteen deputies. We were able to quadruple that number. And Sunday night was without incident, as were the remainder of the fair.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Wyman?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you could give kind of a, I guess, some surrounding information. Is this something that's happened? I've never heard this happening at the Champaign County Fair before. So is this something that has happened in years past? And of the arrests, were the arrest residents, what was the age range? Were they, some people had reported, oh, they were from Chicago. Do you know that? Or do you know if they're from the community? And then if you've also talked with, suppose, our school resource officer, Deanne Nguyen? If, there was also concern that this was an issue that had occurred before and, or had been, I guess, boiling in the school districts? And if there's anything from the high schools or middle schools that had occurred that this was part of?
I'm not aware of any connection between this and any previous incidents that would have occurred that, and I can only speak to the Urbana School District that would have involved students from the Urbana School District, middle or high school. And to your previous question, yes. On the last year, we had a similar incident, small in magnitude, but nevertheless, we did have similar incidents occurring.
And the residents, at least those that were arrested, were those from Champaign-Urbana? Were they from Chicago? Do you know?
That I don't know. The Champaign County Sheriff's Department was the arresting agency in both nights.
Thank you.
Mr. Chenoweth?
Was the fair shut down? And if so, which of those nights was it shut down?
The fair was shut down on Saturday night, July the 24th.
Okay. As a result of the forty to eighty crowd?
Yes.
Are there any other questions or comments? I have a question. When Mr. Johnson was here discussing the issue with the council, he referred to incidents that might have happened at the high school or middle school. Are you familiar with those incidents at all?
I'm aware of incidents that did occur at school closing, but it's nothing that would indicate any connection between that and the people involved in the incidents at the fair.
Now, what, any idea of what was precipitating those incidents?
Nothing conclusive that I can speak to.
Okay. Mr. Chenoweth?
At the county fairgrounds, did the police have a sense that it was premeditated? The gathering and the fight that occurred? Or was it spontaneous, based on evidence gathered?
Well, not based on evidence, but based on information gathered on Saturday night. There are indications that it was premeditated. Unknown as far as Friday night. We had no prior info on that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, Chief. All right, are there any other staff reports? Okay.
Otto? We have a proclamation to present tonight. This is for Francis Nelson Healthcare Center. It reads, "Whereas Francis Nelson Community Healthcare Center is a private, nonprofit corporation that provides high-quality, comprehensive primary health care to all ages of the uninsured and medically underserved population in Urbana; and whereas Francis Nelson Community Healthcare Center has advanced access to affordable primary health care and has facilitated the provision of specialized care by collaborating with other community clinics and hospitals to decrease the cost of illness; and whereas Francis Nelson has improved the health status of Urbana by providing prenatal care and well-baby, well-child, and well-woman exams of the highest quality; and whereas Francis Nelson serves as a vital safety net delivering care to sixty-five hundred patients annually, regardless of insurance status or ability to pay, and contributes to the health and overall economy of the community with health services, jobs, leadership, and investment. Now therefore, I, Todd Sathwaite, Mayor of Urbana, do hereby proclaim the week of August 8th through August 14th, 2004, as National Health Center Week in the city of Urbana, and urge our citizens to recognize the important contributions of Francis Nelson in safeguarding health and improving the quality of life for the people of Urbana." Is there a representative from Francis Nelson here? Andrea Goldberg, the site director, accepting the proclamation on behalf of Francis Nelson.
Thank you very much. On behalf of Francis Nelson Health Center, we'd like to thank you all for the issuing of this proclamation and recognition of the work that we are doing at Francis Nelson and in recognition of National Health Center Week. As I'm sure you all are aware, for at least the last few years, I think it's been an ongoing thing, the ranks of the uninsured and underinsured populations are certainly growing at unprecedented rates, and we are seeing it on a very daily basis at Francis Nelson. We've been doing our very best to meet the needs of this group here in the community. And we've done that by being able to add additional doctors and other providers, as well as extending our hours. However, we do have major constraints in our ability to continue to do it at the rate of which the uninsured, our numbers are growing in this area. And we are in the plans, we're in the early stages of looking at expanding our services, which is desperately needed because of the limitation of space in the existing facility that we've got. So we are formulating those plans, and we're looking forward to your help in the future as we perhaps will be coming to you with the ideas of what we can do to further enhance that. And please be assured that we will continue to do everything that we can to meet the needs in this community for our residents. Thank you.
Okay, any other staff reports? If there's no others, go to approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Are there any additions or corrections? If there's no additions or corrections, I have several. The first one is, in the first paragraph, under discussion of at-large council representation, on page five, it has me saying, Mr. Otto opened the discussion stating he feels there's a significant area of the city, feels its voice is not heard, and having two at-large representatives probably won't remedy that problem, but it is an important step. I think the thrust of my remarks that it wouldn't completely remedy that problem, obviously, it would to some degree remedy that problem. That's why I was, or at least in my opinion, that was the opinion I was expressing. So I would, if there's no objection from the motioner in the second, ask that we amend that, so this is probably won't completely remedy that problem. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. The other correction, under, on page two, under the following, "People did not speak but expressed their opposition to at-large council representation." It's listed Darrell Halberstadt, 1401 East Pennsylvania. Based on his comments at the meeting, I think he was in support of at-large council representation. That was certainly how I interpreted his comments. So I-
Excuse me, could you mention the name?
Darrell Halberstadt, 1401 East Pennsylvania. Ms. Pat?
Didn't he speak, or am I mixing up, mixing up father and son, maybe? Did he?
His son, Dick, spoke. I believe he stood up in his seat and said, "I don't wish to speak."
He said, "I'm against this council."
That may be what he said. We could, I guess, quote him as saying that in the minutes, or I understood the thrust of his remarks to be that he was in support of the at-large resolution, but if I'm mistaken-
I think that was correct. But if he didn't speak, then we would just need to have another paragraph that said the following, spoke, did not speak but expressed support for, and put his name under it. Is that what you meant?
Okay, right. The final correction. Jerry Parr is listed as having addressed an email to the committee expressing their opposition. There was an email from Jerry, well, with Jerry Parr's name on it that I thought was sent around to all of the Democrats. And I'm not, there's the Democrat email list. And I guess it's my understanding she maintains that list, and, you know, any Democrat who wants to send around email can forward it to the list. And whether she agrees or disagrees with the contents of the email isn't, she will generally forward it on to everyone else if a Democrat asks her to do that. So unless I'm mistaken, I didn't understand her to be endorsing the comments of that email or addressing them to city councils. So I guess what I would suggest is that we just remove her name there on page two as people addressing emails to the committee expressing their opposition to at-large council representation. Ms. Pat?
I don't have it with me, but I thought that that was one of the emails in the pile that was printed out for us, was from Jerry Parr expressing opposition. But I'm not sure. Do you recall?
From what I gathered, the email that I received had her name on it as being the one who sent it. So I don't know if it was sent to all the Democrats at large, but the way I read it, it came from Jerry Parr as the person sending the email.
Well, I, I guess, given that she runs the Democratic list, that was my assumption on how the role that, that was being forwarded, not as an endorsement of the views. But, Ms. Wyman?
As you recall, I wasn't here, but Ms. Pat was kind enough to bring stuff that was left on my desk to, or I picked it up from her. And I do recall the email, I recall both receiving an email in my Hotmail account from her that was addressed, I think, to all the Democrats, but also a separate email here. And so I got the impression, I was under the impression, I think like Ms. Pat, that this was also sent in addition to council members. What we could do, and I don't want to cough, discussion of this, is not approve these minutes, go back, look at this stuff, and next week, take final action.
That's probably the best thing to do. Ms. Pat?
Ms. Taylor just went to go fish it up, so I move that we postpone consideration of approval of the minutes until after item five on the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Right then. The next item on the agenda is, well, I guess, all in favor of postponing until after item five, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. All right, next is public input. Next, we have ordinance number 2004-05-053, an ordinance regarding city officials and employees' ethics and political activity. This is an item that has appeared before the committee in the past. And I think, in the context of the gift ban, I think those parts have been presented and discussed. I'd request that a section be added on conflicts of interest. And I guess, if there's no objection, I'll go ahead and present that area and to kick off the discussion, and we can then proceed from there. As I indicated when I first brought this to council, the gift ban legislation that we were considering didn't specifically deal with conflicts of interest. And the state of Illinois laws dealing with conflicts of interest for municipal officials, I think is problematic, both because it is, in some senses, too broad and in some senses, too narrow, and has loopholes. I think it's too broad in the sense that if you have what the state defines to be a conflict of interest, you can't cure it by recusing yourself from a vote, but you have to resign. There's nothing we can do about that. That's the law. It's going to remain the law in the state of Illinois. What I wanted to do was to address some of the loopholes in that law and to try to address them in a sensible way so that a official or citizen appointee could recuse themselves from a conflict of interest, but still remain on the council. I think it's a fairly non-controversial idea. Obviously, if we have a financial interest in some matter before the council, it's not something that we ought to be voting on. If whatever were, is coming before the council is truly a good idea, it ought to be able to pass without a person who has a conflict of interest voting on it. So beyond that, I know that you've all received copies of what's being proposed in your packets. I'll open it up for questions. Ms. Pat?
Thank you. One question. I know I asked this before, but the more information I get, the more, in some ways, the more confused I am. Which is the law that says that a person has to resign, that they can't abstain to avoid a conflict of interest?
It's the Illinois Corrupt Practices Act.
And?
And I guess I'm using conflict of interest in the sense in which it is used in that law, which-
Can you read to me where it says that? Because I have copies of numerous, or is it in this booklet?
It's mentioned in this booklet.
It's mentioned in here? Okay. It says, well, yeah, even in the booklet, does this say, it says, "That the Corrupt Practices Act provides that no elected or appointed municipal officer may be in any manner interested, either directly or indirectly, in his own name or in the name of any other person in any contract or the performance of any work in the making or letting of which such officer may be called upon to act or vote."
Could you name the page?
Oh, it says this is page one. I'm so sorry. Page one of the booklet from the Illinois Municipal League. And then it says, oh, I see. And it says it's not enough to absolve the official from violation of the act. Okay. And a contract coming before the board. Okay. Now, the next question is how, this is a question for Mr. Holtz. By what authority can the city ordinance override the state? Or does the city, that's really the question. Will the city ordinance override the state law? Do we have home rule power to override the Corrupt Practices Act?
Yeah, I haven't, I hadn't looked at it with respect to that particular question. I'd have to have a look at that, and maybe I can do that here momentarily, see if there's a home rule preemption. As you know, we have home rule authority over anything that, pardon me, over anything that's a matter of local concern. And there's two ways in which a court could find that we do not have home rule authority over a particular item. One is if the legislature has specifically expressly preempted our home rule authority. So if there's a, if there's a phrase in a particular statute that says, "And by the way, home rule governments, home rule cities may not change this by enacting a local ordinance," then that preempts our authority. The other way is for, is, basically comes from the notion that our home rule authority extends to matters of local concern. And the flip side of that is that as to matters of statewide concern, our home rule authority does not exist. And so basically, when I go and have a look at the statute here momentarily, I'll be looking first for language along those lines. If there isn't language along those lines, then I would have to research the question further to see if there is any case law specifically on preemption of home rule authority by the fact that, pardon, not preemption, but whether there is home rule authority or no home rule authority by virtue of the fact that this might be an issue of statewide concern. Having said that, passing this type of ordinance, I don't think would be unlawful. It's just a question of whether or not we would be able to override any state law. So it would be, it would be another level. It would be a local level that would be enforced locally rather than at the state level. And in that sense, I think that it would be appropriate to have this kind of prohibition in our own ordinances, if the council so chooses.
Thank you. I have another question related to that. And that is the whole, the whole issue of direct or indirect interest. And again, in this book with Illinois Municipal Booklet, on page four, it, this surprised me to read that the mere fact that a public body enters into a contract with the spouse of a member of the public body does not constitute a per se violation of the Corrupt Practices Act. And it goes on to say that as long as, so long as the public official's husband or wife does not have an ownership interest or a disguised pecuniary interest in the spouse's business, there will be no conflict of interest. So it sounds like if my husband owned a business, the city could contract with him, and I could vote on it, even though we have a financial and legal relationship. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, you know, Ms. Pat, I'd be happy to disclose that you and I have had some conversations about these particular statutes before. And I'll reiterate now what I said before, which is that these things are just not a real model of clarity. They're, at one point, I'd been asked by a few people, "Isn't there some way to bring some idea of certainty to this stuff, that we can know for sure?" You know, I don't know particularly which particular case you're talking about from that book. I don't have my copy of that particular pamphlet in front of me right now. But as you know from skimming through that material, you can see that courts say all kinds of things. And they tend to look at particular situations. They use real broad language. But then they also look at the unique situation that's placed before them. And I think it's fair to say that, number one, courts do not always agree with each other about what constitutes a conflict of interest, that different courts would view things one way, while other courts would view things another way. And number two, that over time, the notion of what constitutes a conflict can change. I wish I could tell you that I can answer with certainty whether or not that would be an indirect conflict of interest or a direct conflict of interest. And looking at some of this language here, you know, it sounds like it's drafted by lawyers, and it probably was. And they try to cover all bases over and over again. And so you'll have language in statutes that is redundant. People will say a contract is null and void. Well, null is good enough, or void is good enough. You don't need to say both. So by saying something is a direct conflict of interest, it can also be an indirect conflict of interest and vice versa. The long and short of it is that, the real thrust of all this is that all of us as public officials have a continuing obligation to examine the activities in which we are personally involved in light of the activities and the actions that are requested before us in our official capacities, and always ask ourselves, "Is there some reason that someone would think that I'm not being fair in how I rule or how I vote on this particular issue?" And if you think that there is some reason that someone would think that you've got reason not to be fair about it, or that you've got a personal interest in it, you know, I think the uncertainty should push you to the decision to abstain or get yourself out of the situation as well as you can. Basically, just an abundance of caution is what you should be using here. That's really the best that I can say about it. I don't know that there's anybody out there who can provide a definitive description of what is a conflict, whether it's direct or indirect. And, you know, that booklet that you have there is helpful only in the sense that it, in the sense that it can scare you to death when you read some of it, because you think, geez, you know, I could be prosecuted for all kinds of things. And I guess that's the bottom line, is that as public officials, we've got this obligation, and we should be extremely cautious and use good judgment always to avoid votes that could be questionable. And that's where the faith of people in their government comes from.
Well, thank you. That's certainly a complete answer. Although I feel, to some extent, what we're doing is saying it, using your example of null and void, saying it's null but not void. Or it's not null, but it's void. And, you know, I'm 100% behind the intent here of making the law more clear so that officials know what they need to do. But I don't, I don't think we've accomplished that. Which is not criticism of anyone, it just, it seems that the big questions are still up there. And this spouse one, I, just, you know, for disclosure, I don't have a spouse, so this isn't actually relevant to me. But in trying to determine, is this, is something, you know, how closely related am I to a decision in making a decision about whether or not to abstain? Having an example that, oh, it's okay to vote on a contract with your husband's company sort of throws me, because if it were okay to do that, it'd be okay to do just about anything other than vote on it for my own company. And so that's, if there were some way we could define indirect, I think everyone understands what direct interest is. And I think the difficult part is what constitutes an indirect interest. And I, but I take it from your answer, there's no place, whether it's Black Law Dictionary or state statute, that will define that.
I don't think so. I think that the-
I think that the language that's been proposed today by Mr. Otto, it actually goes a little bit in that direction of helping to define that. It does use the language directly or indirectly. But then it goes on to say that a person shall be deemed financially interested, so that would be, I guess, directly or indirectly, in any kind of contract, grant, whatever, appropriation of money. If the person has these particular types of relationships with the person or company that would benefit from this contract. And it lists a variety, including family and roommate and domestic partner and all kinds of things that seem to reflect modern realities of living arrangements. So I think that that language really does help define what indirectly can mean. Certainly, if it goes to your roommate, you could say it's not a direct interest, but maybe it is an indirect interest, or to your spouse for that matter, that case law notwithstanding that you're quoting.
Okay, thank you. I'll save the rest for debate.
Ms. Wyman?
I have a few questions. Mr. Holtz, we've got in here, I think from the old ethics ordinance that we looked at a couple of months ago, definitions, but I'm just wondering what, what's, well, we've got several different definitions that state as defined by the state statute and that sort of thing. Got, let's see, I think near the front of the ordinance, under definitions, section 2-201, Campaign for elective Office, defined in section two of the Lobbyist Registration Act. Do you think that when we bring this back, that there'd be a way, anytime it talks about as defined in state statute, various state statutes, that we could get what that definition is so we don't have people flipping back and forth from the state statutes to the local ordinances?
Yeah, I'll go through the, through the definitions section, which, by the way, is pulled directly from the state statute and makes those same cross references. But I'll go through that and pull out those, those particular provisions that it cross references to and copy them to you all.
Great. I think that'll be helpful. Just for example, contribution, it says has same meanings, but just to, so it's clear for everyone who's reading over it. I had a couple of other questions. There was an insertion of, in the definitions section, collective bargaining. And so I'm just wondering what the reasoning was for the collective bargaining issue.
Where are you in there?
Oh, I think it was inserted in a couple of different places. We've got the definite, in the definitions section, but I think it's inserted in the definitions section because we're adding as a prohibited, I believe a prohibited, or campaign activity or prohibited political activity. I think there's, the issue, it looks like it was added in addition to whatever the state recommendation was. The, the collective bargaining. I didn't know if there was a local experience that caused that?
No, I think that was in the state statute.
Oh, okay. It looks like it's been added just in the July 23 memo, an ordinance proposal that we have, but if not, that's...
I think so. I think that was part of the state statute.
Okay.
I'll double check that, though.
Okay. And then, as long as we're looking at definitions, I'm curious what definition we would, Mr. Holtz, you propose to use for domestic partner. Just know from research that just about every governmental unit has a different definition for domestic partner, from the city of Urbana to the state of Illinois to Illinois State University and the University of Illinois. And so if we're, if that ends up staying in, I think it'd be important to make sure we have some sort of proposed definition for domestic partner. And then...
Perhaps, just to throw it out, it occurs to me that maybe the way to do that is to, is to say it would be a domestic partner if you've ever claimed that person as a domestic partner under, under any benefits plan or employer's plan.
Just as a gut reaction, I think that sounds fine, as long as you've got a starting point and an ending point, because just like marriages, domestic partnerships can end, so to have that. And then in the conflicts of interest section, section 2-207, section B says, no elected official or citizen appointee may participate in, vote upon, or otherwise act on any matter in which that person has a conflict of interest as defined by any Illinois or federal law regulation. I'm wondering with this section, how it's, if this is, because it's underlined, if this is an additional, if this is anything stronger than what the state or federal government has, or if it's just a way to, for the city to be able to enforce that perhaps now the city can't enforce? Or if it's just to add extra emphasis?
I could, I could address that since...
Thanks.
I'm bringing this to counsel. I think the idea is to, to the extent that there's ambiguity, you just clarify things. And we've listed a bunch of financial conflicts of interest that require recusal, and so you also add this and say, you know, if you're talking about Illinois or federal laws and conflicts of interest, you're also required to recuse yourself under those, for those conflicts of interest as well. Just removes the ambiguity, removes any possible ambiguity, I guess.
Okay. And I guess one other thing, under the ethics advisor, right under that section, we had talked, and we talked about having a commissioner, or maybe the township, when we voted on this at township, there was an issue of having a commission and concerns, I think, about having an ethics advisor who is, who is employed at the city, who's employed, you know, under the mayor or with approval of council, and how that could work, just to make sure that ethics advisor or commission actually isn't facing, or isn't so concerned about their own job that they're willing to overlook, or that they're persuaded. And I think just as we're looking down the line 10 years, 20 years from now, just to make sure that that's, that's basically, that position is protected from any sort of adverse action based on, on an ethics advisor or ethics committee's decisions. And I'm wondering where we are with the idea of a commission?
Well, it's not, it's not presently in the proposal. That certainly doesn't prevent any member of council from proposing it. I would like to follow up momentarily on the, on the problem about the ethics advisor. I don't remember whether I said so when I first presented this question to the council. But, you know, I did point out that unfortunately, ultimately, the prosecutor under this, if there were, if there were a violation, and if there were probable cause to think that there were a violation of this statute by any city official, ultimately, the prosecution would come down to being done by my office. Obviously, that raises a concern with respect to the fact that the mayor appoints me and the council confirms the appointment. And on the other hand, with respect to employees who don't have authority over me, you know, there really isn't that kind of concern. The fact is, if evidence were brought to me that a member of the council, or the mayor, or somebody else in the administration who had authority over me, if there were evidence that that person were violating these ordinances, I would have to hand it off to a special prosecutor. I'd have to hire outside counsel to take the matter off my hands. And that would be the only, the only real proper way for me to handle it.
And under this ordinance or under another ordinance currently, currently in place, are, do you have authority to do that, or would we have to make a budget amendment?
I have the authority, I believe, existing under our ordinances. We hire outside counsel for various special items, workers' compensation cases, things like that.
I'm wondering if we, I would like to see, after we've finished discussion, something like that explicitly stated, just so it's, I think, clear, and I think it creates more confidence, just so that everyone's aware how it works. Similar to the section B of the conflicts of interest that just restates or reiterates and clarifies any ambiguity, the idea of any concern or ambiguity that would be under the ethics advisor, I think would be important to have the understanding that any concern about this conflict, potential conflict relating to council members or mayor or clerk or however that works would be passed off to a special prosecutor, however the language is. I think that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Chenoweth?
Yeah, I agree with the spirit of this, and the spirit of the additions. I guess I have one question, which is in the definition of financial interest. To me, the definition of financial interest is very clear, and when I look at the state statute, at least in our little book here, which is kind of amended version, it's contract or performance of work. So it's, you know, it's money, it's contracts, it's grants, it's appropriations.
Right.
And I've noticed that you've added to that the phrase legislative enactment, and I just think of things that we've enacted, like the anti-war resolution, or a support of the G E O, or I'm just thinking of some of the things that we've done, you know, the cats running at large, you know, the kind of things that are not specific contracts or appropriations. When you, when you wrote this, and we're talking about financial interest, and you added legislative enactment, did you mean to include every act that we take?
No.
Even if there is no financial, no financial bearings on what we're doing?
No, the, the purpose of that is to, is not to get to things like, you know, anti-war resolutions, or child curfew, or that sort of thing, but to try to address, make sure that we cover all of the financial conflicts of interest. So, for example, in my ward, there is, there was a substantial section of it that had road work done and repaving done. That was done, you know, under the general, you know, capital improvement plan project. I didn't own a house on any of the streets that were being redone, but if I had owned a house where we're doing something that's sort of specific to a general area and not for the general public, then I think it probably would have been appropriate for me to recuse myself and, you know, have the council vote on it. So it's, it's not something that would apply, you know, willy-nilly to any legislation, regardless of whether or not you have a financial interest in it. But the key part is the part saying directly or indirectly financially interested. And if there's not a financial interest in it, then there's no conflict of interest.
I guess the question is, how, how is the paving of the street, I mean, unless it's a section in front of your house, for example?
That's what I'm suggesting, yeah.
Okay. So if it's a section in front of your house, then there's a financial interest because your house may become more valuable than the houses around it because you have that paving?
Right.
But I guess from reading this, I don't think it's clear. The language makes it sound like you are redefining financial interest as contracts, grants, appropriations, and then these legislative enactments. It's, just from reading, it's unclear that, now, if you were to say financial interest in any contract grant appropriation or legislative enactment where there is a financial gain, then I feel like, oh, well, that's, that's pretty clear, that there's, you know, there's a financial, there's a potential financial gain, there's a financial gain, then it makes it clear that you're not necessarily saying that...
Okay.
You're kind of including in the umbrella of financial interests legislative enactment.
I wouldn't object to saying legislative enactment where there is a financial interest, just because if you say financial gain, you may introduce conclusion, confusion in terms of people, well, is a financial gain different than a financial interest? I would say that I think that's probably redundant to specify that we're talking about legislative enactments that have a financial interest, but...
Or maybe we...
If it, if it's something that, you know, that would make you feel more comfortable with it, why, I guess I don't, I don't see, I don't think that would change the meaning of what we're trying to accomplish in any way.
But perhaps it would be for the financial benefit of that person rather than where there is a financial interest, since that's been stated already. Just wanted to understand what you meant by legislative enactment, so...
Sure. Again, I understand what you're driving at. I think, I think we keep things clear if we stick to the term financial, financial interest, but that's a, that's an opinion I had based on clarity and legal draft, and but I...
It's actually, financial interest is pretty clear. It's the word benefit that's not, it's, financial interest is clear. It's, there's something financial.
Right.
It's the word benefit. So we, it just, as we go into this, we want to consider that.
Yeah, the other thing, I guess, that I would say is it's, wouldn't necessarily be, just where there's a benefit, but there might be a detriment. So for example, if the city were deciding to impose a special assessment district to pay for sidewalks in a particular neighborhood that doesn't have them, and if you're, if you live in that district, then, you know, you're going to be hit with a fairly substantial tax bill that the city at large would not be hit with. And so in that case, you might have a financial interest from a legislative enactment that would not be a financial benefit, but trying to avoid a financial detriment potentially. So, Ms. Pat?
Is that redone?
No.
Does that have a follow-up on that?
Yeah, well, I don't, why don't you follow up on that? Because I have a separate question. Go ahead.
This is a question again from Mr. Holtz. The last sentence of this paragraph says, which is, I think relates to this, is, "No conflict shall be deemed to exist under this sub-paragraph as to any legislative enactments that affected the elected official or citizen appointee only to the extent that members of the general public are affected." Now, I don't interpret that as meaning every person in the city of Urbana. But for example, if there were a special assessment in my neighborhood for streetlights, it would affect, it might affect, and if we're, you know, in an area that affected my house and not the other six council members' houses, then, but it affected 35 households and I was one of those 35 households, would that, would that fall into, would that be covered by the members of the general public? I guess what Milton's saying is that if my house is in the special assessment district, then I have a conflict of interest because it affects my tax bill, but it's not just my tax bill, it's affecting whatever, three dozen people's tax bills.
Yeah, I'm not, as I would interpret this language, it would actually apply to a larger section of the general, general public. In the situation you're talking about where, with a special assessment that affects only a few blocks perhaps, and, and one of those blocks is where a council member lives, you know, that kind of thing comes up fairly regularly with respect to the plan commission and ZBA. You know, a member of the plan commission might be in an area or very close to a property that's being affected. And in those situations, we have advised them that it may not necessarily be a state statutory conflict of interest under the local government code or municipal code, but that it can, that it really is basically a common law conflict of interest, which is basically a situation where, where somebody would have reason to think that, that you've got some motivation to, to vote one way or another that's different because your own personal interests would be affected in a way that's different from the general public of the city as a whole.
And I know you're saying there's not definition, but where would you draw the line?
Yeah, you know, that gets so difficult. You can come up with a million hypotheticals, a million scenarios, each one progressively less onerous or progressively worse. And, you know, we could go on like this forever in this kind of conversation. But basically, I think what it comes down to again is, is that you have to just ask yourself, is this something where somebody else is gonna, is gonna really have a valid point that maybe I'm not really voting in a public's interest, but I'm really influenced by something that affects me personally more than anything else?
Yeah, I guess the other thing I would just point out is, it's not like, you know, when you have a factual situation in front of you, you, the individual council member would have to try to guess. You've got the ethics advisor, who at least is currently drafted, is also the prosecutor, the person who would prosecute any violations. So if you go ask Steve and say, is this a conflict of interest? And he says, no, I don't think... And he says, no, I don't think so, you, you have pretty good confidence that you're okay.
Actually, that's not, the ordinance says that the chief administrative officer will designate an ethics advisor, does not say the city attorney will be the ethics advisor.
Actually, you're correct, you're right. But in any case, if you had an opinion stating that something was not a conflict of interest, it would be unlikely that you would be prosecuted for violating the ordinance.
Well, I, yeah, I, I find, I don't know, it doesn't seem to me that we're accomplishing, I mean, as we, the more we talk about this, that we're accomplishing any purpose of clarifying anything whatsoever. It seems it's still, it's still as, as up in the air as it is under the state law. Which doesn't mean it hurts to put this in the law. It's just, is a shame if, if what we're trying to do is make things more clear that we're not making things any more clear than, than they exist now. And I think it's easier to point to things that are clear. If we're voting on designating my house an historic landmark, well, obviously I have a conflict of interest, it's my house. If it's a house across the street, do I have a conflict? If it's down the street, do I have a conflict? Well, if it's a block away, do I have a conflict? You know, that's, I'm, is what, what is the, what governs that, that decision? What even would govern, if I were to ask the city attorney for an opinion, what would, what would be the basis for determining how far away from, from a property one has to live? Because if, if the, if the rule that you apply is if it's your property or you share a boundary, or your, your, your property touches that property, then you have a conflict. And if not, then you don't. That might be something worth putting into law so that it's clear. But I don't know if that would be the case. If, if Mr. Holtz says any, can't shed any more light on that.
It just, and again, it just gets to the fact that there, there are so many different hypotheticals you could come up with. Right. I have had that specific question from a, I think it was a plan commissioner or something. You know, where, where the plan commissioner's property didn't, I think the way it was, was it wasn't even a shared boundary line, it was a point-to-point touching, you know, that whole theoretical touching. Is that a touching that's enough? You know, it's just, it's one of those things where, look, it, people think you're close enough that you really wouldn't be able to be fair about it. So, recuse yourself, it's an easy thing to do. It's, it's not something that the council can overrule you on. If you decide that you have a conflict of interest on something and you declare that, the council can't by a vote say, no, we disagree. You have to vote regardless of whether you think you've got a conflict, it's your own personal decision by, by, by ordinance or by municipal code. You've got that authority to make the decision for yourself. And really, that's what it comes down to. When somebody calls me and asks, geez, this is a tough situation, what do you think? We kind of try to walk through it with that, with that notion in mind. And if it looks like it's gonna be, particularly if it looks like it's gonna be a close vote. You know, if there's a split commission or something and, and your vote would be the deciding vote and you're the one who lives two doors down or touches just barely that property, well, maybe it's better to stay out of that particular vote. There's no hard answers.
Well, I guess the concern goes the other way around. Not, if a person said, I think I have a conflict and they abstain, that'd be fine. It's more if it goes the other way around, that someone does not feel they have a conflict because they don't see how they could possibly get anything out of the decision. And, but we're drafting ordinance to enable the city administration to go after a council member for a conflict of interest that maybe doesn't exist. That's what my concern is. And if that's the case, the law really needs to be more clear. Though, I'll just ask one more follow-up question on that. You mentioned that if, you know, if the person who prosecuted would be the city attorney who had prosecuted, you would appoint a special prosecutor. In what, in what form would this be prosecuted? Would this be in circuit court? Would this be, if we created a commission, would it be before the commission?
As I see this merging with the ordinance that we have here, it would be, it would be as an ordinance violation. I think that the ordinance sets forth a maximum fines of $750. I see that as being covered, as covering this language that Mr. Otto has proposed here.
So it'd be a city violation?
Be a city violation, yes.
Like the same way zoning violations and other underage drinking, curfew, all those things are handled.
Exactly.
So it would be in court. If we created a commission, would it be, would, would the prosecution be before the commission or would the commission have a different function?
We'll have to have a look at that again. Well, I'm not sure exactly what the township, you're talking about the language that the township had passed. And I don't, I wasn't part of that process, not the township attorney. I can have a look at the language again and, that the township passed and see if I can answer that question.
I think if you look at the language carefully of the powers of the commission, they have the power to investigate, but I don't believe they have the power to prosecute or to decide, at least the way it's drafted in the township ordinance. And I, you know, looking at it more carefully, I think that's a real problem. If you have a question about it, I suppose you could ask the commission for an opinion. But it could potentially be much more involved than just asking whoever an ethics advisor is, because you have to wait for the commission to, you know, when are they gonna have their next meeting? And do all the public notice for a public meeting and all of that. Mayor Sato.
Clarify on the, the commission, that the, in the form that the township passes, it says, we'll have the following powers and duties. And part of it is to issue recommendations for disciplinary action, impose fines. So they, by this, have the ability to impose fines. But then also, they have the ability to refer violations to the appropriate attorney for prosecution. So let's see, I don't know, I suppose they can impose a fine, but then also refer to, I guess for criminal prosecution rather than just a fine.
And I should, I should point that out too, Ms. Pat, in the, in the township language that was passed by Cunningham Township. You remember when I initially made my presentation on this some weeks ago, I pointed out that, that the township passed the proposed, the draft that was promulgated as a model by, by Illinois Attorney General Lisa Madigan. And in that model ordinance that she promulgated, she put in language making these violations misdemeanors. There's serious question in my mind whether or not we have the authority to do that under this particular proposal, because the misdemeanors are for one year. Normally, under the municipal code, we have only, we have the authority as a home rule city to establish misdemeanor violations, but no more than six months incarceration. So a class B misdemeanor. This proposal by, by Ms. Madigan would set up these offenses as class A misdemeanors that is punishable by up to a year in jail. And clearly, obviously, that's different than what I have proposed in, in the version that I presented to you. I pointed that out at the time and said, you know, you have the option, I suppose, of trying it. I don't think it's advisable, because in my own mind, it throws into doubt the enforceability of the entire thing. I, I'd hate to be in a situation where we've got somebody who's, who has violated this thing. Clearly, the evidence is good, but, but the courts come and say, well, you know, that's all fine, but because you imposed a, you imposed a penalty that you do not have the authority to impose, this person can't be prosecuted. And so I, I, I think there are communities out there, certainly like Cunningham Township, that, that enacted this proposal and created a class A misdemeanor. There are also communities out there who declined to do so and just went with this, with the typical ordinance violation setup. My preference is to go with the typical ordinance violation setup and see if there's court rulings down the road that say, yeah, you, home rule municipalities do have the authority to, to make a class A misdemeanor on this thing. And then if that were to happen, then I could bring it back to you and say, well, you know, we've now got the authority clearly to do so. But in the meantime, I prefer not to.
Ms. Wyman.
I had a question, I think, following up on Ms. Chenoweth's question. And actually, on, to make sure I don't, didn't misunderstand Mr. Otto. Regarding this last statement in section A of section two, two oh seven about legislative enactments. What I understood, Mr. Otto, you saying was that there was, that if there was road repair work done in front of your house, then you would recuse yourself? And I guess I want to make sure, if it was part of my, my concern and what I, I don't think would be, would be right, is to say that anyone who votes on the, the capital improvement plan, which is all of the roadwork and public works for the entire city, if you're, if in front of your house or down the corner or on your jogging route, there was to be a new, new street work put on, put in, or new lights put in, or that sort of thing, that, that, I guess I, I don't see that as a sort of conflict of interest. And I guess I would be concerned that the entire council would have to recuse themselves because sometime in the next 10 years, there's gonna be something going on in front of or near your home. And, and so if there's a way to put financial benefit that's, or more clearly defined, as Ms. Pat had talked about, the general public, so that as long as it's not passing an ordinance to put, I don't know, brand-new, you know, gilded gutters right in front of one house at, you know, being that of one of the council members or that sort of thing. I think that, that if it's part of the general legislative enactment, whether it be the capital improvement plan or streetscapes, and one of the council members lives downtown and there's new streetscapes planned, that, that shouldn't be part of a conflict of interest. And so that we can more clearly define it or understand it so that, because I, I don't see that sort of work being, that I've just described as, as general capital improvements as being a conflict of interest. And I'd like to see it, if we need to, to just clarify that, that section so that we don't have an entire city council abstaining every, every time there's a capital improvement plan. Or even a vote for new streetlights down one street.
I guess I, I didn't express myself very well. I don't think a, a general vote on the capital improvement plan for, you know, the whole city would necessarily run afoul of that. But if the capital improvement plan is being discussed and you say, you know, I want the street in front of my house added, that I think would be inappropriate. But I, I didn't express myself very well on that, so.
I may not have understood. So I, I think that makes sense and just, and I don't know if we need to, to put clarifying language in there or, or if the, the idea of the general public, if, if that's clear enough that if it affects more than just one household or something like that, whether it be, I think it, one block would be enough to be a general public idea. And I think Mr. Holtz's idea of, of the motivation is important. I, I do see the other concern in that if someone is, if a council member is uncomfortable, feels it's too close a call, or even not too close a call, they can recuse themselves, there's never a problem with that. And that's not part of this ordinance, that's been in existence for a long time. But I do, I am concerned, as, as Ms. Pat said, that someone says, no, this isn't a conflict of interest, there's, you know, new, new street work going on, you know, all down the block for a mile down the street. And so the council member doesn't feel it's a conflict of interest. And then, again, the prosecutor, whoever's prosecuting does. And so just, again, if we need to make this, add some extra language to clarify it, but just so, so someone doesn't end up voting on something where they don't feel that there's any conflict of interest, but apparently, you know, the prosecutor does. Thank you.
I guess I would just say, I think that's where the importance of the ethics advisor comes in. And that's something under the current system, I'm sure we've all availed ourselves of, is, I know I have, you know, asking Jack about particular situations when Jack Waller was attorney and, and getting very, you know, sensible advice. And that's always the best way to protect yourself in these situations, is to go ahead and ask the, the ethics advisor and, and get a reasoned opinion on, you know, what the issues are that you need to be considering. And I guess I would also just say, in terms of, you know, generally, this is a law of general application that's intended to apply to a variety of situations. And like most of such laws, it's impossible to anticipate every situation where it would apply and specifically, you know, name and describe that situations. And I'm sure being in law school, taking statutory interpretations class, you know that that's a little bit of a fool's errand. No matter how you draft a statute, a creative lawyer can come up with some, you know, outlandish argument that it's ambiguous. But judges are sensible people and juries are sensible people. And, you know, our laws generally get applied sensibly. So I just, I think that's an important thing to remember in all of this. Not that, you know, concerns with misunderstandings or clarity are illegitimate. But we are talking about a general law that is attempting to apply a general rule for the very reason that you can't anticipate necessarily every particular rule. Ms. Chenoweth.
Yeah, on the topic of, of clarifying things, I think that, um, I think we're, we're kind of muddling through and eventually we'll come to some place of clarity. I think one thing that we might want to consider is, and I've actually thought this for a while, is that, you know, when anyone gets on a commission, when someone becomes a city council member or township trustee, I think that, you know, what would be great is to have some kind of, you know, set of criteria, things to watch out for. And so, you know, being able to not necessarily cover every single detail in an ordinance, but to be able, for an ethics advisor who works for the city, to be able to say, you know, these are the kinds of things to watch out for, and these are, these are the things that you should be, be aware of. And this is, you know, generally how we think of, about conflicts of interest and you have some consensus on that, you know. And if in that book, there was also, you know, the basics of Robert's rule supporter and other kinds of things, I think would be really helpful to commissioners when they're first starting out doing these kind of things. I think that maybe some of the things that we're trying to do in this, which is to provide some guidance and clarity, would be better, would make more sense in a kind of guidebook. And that this is really for us to come up with something kind of more pithy and specific that describes what it, what in addition, and I still am unclear about this, what in addition to the state of Illinois statute are we adding? The way it's written now, now it's just kind of, it, it feels very broad. It's, it seems like, and I understand the spirit of it, because, like you said, Mr. Otto, there's so many different situations. And we really do need to be, I think, overly cautious about conflicts of interest. At the same time, I think it's important not to, you know, we were elected to be, and I mean this in the, in the sense of opinionated, interested people. And we were elected to be interested in the city, interested in the neighborhoods. And so, you know, looking over this language, I, I could make a list, you know, 100 items long of the things that this council has done that benefit a particular neighborhood that they live in, or benefit, you know, a particular base of constituents who organized and said, hey, you know, we want this, we want a bike path down Goodwin Avenue and want some Goodwin repaired, we want Budrow, you know, to be repaired, we want this, we want that, we want additional parking enforcement in West Urbana, we want parking regulations in West Urbana. I mean, it's just, it seems like almost every legislative enactment we've had has had targeted towards some kind of neighborhood. And actually, in a lot of those situations, the council member who, who is elected from that neighborhood brought forward a resolution. And so, you know, to bring forward something and then abstain is kind of an odd thing. And so I guess I would not want to, to tie the hands of council members to do the right thing by the city of Urbana and by their constituents. And so when I think of conflict, conflict of interest, I think we need to be very clear that we're talking about financial gain or, or financial detriment. I guess I, I don't see that in this language. But perhaps the guidance could be provided in a pamphlet form or something like that. Information about how to get in touch with the ethics advisor and things like that.
Sure. I can answer several. The, the first question that you asked, I can answer fairly specifically, which is that it appears that the Illinois Practices Act has been interpreted cases to apply only to a particular office holder. And as Ms. Pat and Steve were discussing earlier, you know, members of spouses. and Steve were discussing earlier, you know, members of spouses. It has specific provisions that, you know, uh, involving, uh, minimum corporations. And so, it leaves out a lot of, um, what this does at the state of Illinois, law does not, is it covers, uh, a lot of conflicts of interest that are not covered, uh, by that law, and that we all understand to be conflicts of interest, such as, um, you know, your spouse or domestic partner, um, you know, somebody that you're related to, uh, by blood, such as your children, or your parents, um, a, a company whose board you sit on, a partnership. So, we have, we actually have in this, instead of general vague language, we have a very specific list of the relationships that are covered by the law. And it's relate, it's, it's a list of relationships, it's broader than that provided for in, uh, Illinois law, and, um, I, I think it is concise in the sense that it's not, uh, too broad, but it's also comprehensive, in that, uh, it does actually list most of those relationships, where a warning flag goes up, and you know that you need to, uh, watch out for it. So, um, the, the thing that it does, that Illinois law does not do, is it covers many more of the conflicts of interest than Illinois law does not, such as a spouse, for example. Are there any other questions? Okay. Uh, if not, then a motion would be in order.
I move to send the ordinance to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Patton?
I want to make a motion to amend that motion. Uh, in this section on conflicts of interest, that's page eight, section two dash two oh seven, uh, the motion is to, oh, I'm sorry, I have to capitalize now. Well, to delete, to delete the language that says, "Or to any family member, including but not limited to any person to whom that person is related by blood or marriage, and any domestic partner, roommate, or housemate of that person."
Okay. Uh, does the seconder accept the amendment?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, so we have a motion and a second. I guess that becomes, uh, part of the main motion, unless you're intending to open that up for discussion. I, I would certainly like to discuss it, rather than have it be part of the main motion.
Actually, I, I didn't, I intended it as a motion to amend, which is why I made them as two separate motions.
Okay, all right.
So, is that, so somebody needs to say it.
Is there any discussion?
I'll second that.
All right. Ms. Patton?
The, you know, I understand the thrust of it is, and that, and that was part of why I asked the question about the spouse, because I thought, "I don't get it, if state law says that you can vote on a contract with your husband's company, why would we want to make a law that says that, um, you can't vote on anything that has anything to do with any family member?" Uh, but, the concern I have is that, uh, I guess it depends how big a family you come from, but, um, I come from a very large family, and the, the number of people to whom I am related by blood is, um, well, I guess it depends how far you go. If you really don't go far enough, we're all related by blood. Uh, but, I mean, just, you know, for example, um, in May, I received an invitation in the mail to a graduation party for a young man and a young woman who are, um, graduating from high school and college, respectively. And I did not recognize these young people's names. I looked at the return address, and it was from Buffalo Grove, Illinois, a place I've never been, and I looked at the last name on it, and I didn't recognize the name. I guessed, because it was an invitation to a graduation party, that this was from a relative. So, I called my sister in Chicago, and I asked, "Whose kids are these?" And she told me the parents' names, didn't do, didn't do any good, I still didn't know who they were. I said, "Whose grandchildren are these?" Because that's usually the way it can work in the family. And she said, "Uncle Babe." I thought, "Oh, Uncle Babe, he was the youngest of my grandfather's 12 brothers and sisters." Uh, he, um, yeah, this is a real story. Um, I, he was called Babe because he was the youngest of the 12 kids. I don't actually know what his given name was, and although my family was very close with five of my grandfather's brothers and sisters, and their children, their grandchildren, I can tell you their names and all that, I do not know Uncle Babe's given name, I do not know, um, his children's names, I don't know his grandchildren's names, and the last time I saw the man was approximately 45 years ago. If that, those names had come to me not, it, to my home address, as an invitation to a graduation party, but were names on a development agreement before the city, I would not even know I was voting on something having to do with people to whom I'm related, but I am, in fact, related to them by blood, and, um, the, um, these kids are my second cousins, and their parents are my, my first cousins once removed. There are a lot of people who want to be related to by blood, and the issue, in, in terms of conflict of interest, well, the one issue, which is, which is very well stated here in this book that we got, is that, um, these statutory conflict of interest provisions serve notice that self-dealing by public officials will not be tolerated. I agree with that sentiment 100 percent. Voting on a zoning change, or a development agreement, or a contract with a person who is in some way related to the official, but by blood, but is not even a person who is known to them, um, doesn't seem to me to be self-dealing. And, in fact, it doesn't seem, it's not, it's not self-dealing, it's, and, like I said, a person would maybe not even know it. Likewise, uh, in some cases, a roommate or a housemate may be someone's, um, long-term romantic partner, or their best buddy. Um, in many circumstances, a person's roommate could be an absolute stranger. Uh, if you live at, um, atrium apartments, Melrose Apartments, University Commons Apartments, or in any university or privately-owned residence hall, uh, your roommate will be someone you did not select, or in most cases, your roommate will be someone you did not select, someone with whom you have no legal, financial, or contractual relationship, they're just another person in your space. Uh, in other places, you know, a person could be close. So, I guess, what, what really, it's what Steve said a few, the city attorney said, um, a few minutes ago in this discussion, it's really a matter of the official being concerned about whether they have a conflict or a perceived conflict based on what the specific relationship is. But to, I think it's just too broad to say that if a relationship happens to be blood, or happens to be, by, by marriage doesn't just mean the person you're married to, but any of their many blood relatives, um, or a person's, or a person who happens to live in the same house that you live in, uh, that that really covers a lot more, uh, people than any folks with whom one would actually have a financial interest. And, and the bottom line is, if the elected official isn't getting anything out of it, and doesn't feel any, um, any pressure or, or sway one way or another to benefit or not benefit the entity or individual with whom the contract is being made, there isn't a conflict of interest, so why should we make that unlawful? That's my thinking on the subject.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I think, um, you're probably right, that may be overbroad, but there is, uh, language elsewhere, um, in the Gift Ban Exception, section two point, or two, uh, two oh five, that lists, uh, specific relatives that are close, and not second cousins that you haven't heard of, or any of their family for 45 years. And maybe the thing to do is to substitute, uh, this list for, um, the language that you're proposing to eliminate, and so, that it's very clear which specific relatives, um, or domestic partners and so forth, that, that are being referred to, and it's got a list of 30 or 40 different relations, close relations here. I think, because I think it does make sense to include some family members, um, close family members, because it, it is very well a conflict of interest for somebody to be voting on a contract with, um, a company that's owned by a wife or husband of, of, of an elected official, or a son or daughter. And so, I think it is probably wise to include a list of close relatives, um, instead of having the, uh, language that's listed here, which may be overbroad.
If I can, uh, sorry, if I can jump in for a second, I, there was a comment that I wanted to make about that list of close relatives, uh, and for whatever reason, it's cut off in the photocopy that wound up in my copy of the packet. Um, uh, I think the last one that's listed is fiance, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I think the state statute has two different spellings of the word fiance, and that goes back to something that I didn't know, somebody pointed it out to me the other day, um, that, uh, one type of fiance is the female, and the other is the male, and, and I don't know which way they are, and since I don't plan to be in that position any time in the future, I, I'm not going to bother to learn, but just so you know, if you decide to go with that language, we'll make sure we put that second fiance spelling in there.
It, it actually was in the packet that ended up on my desk, I assume on other people's as well. Ms. Wyman?
Yeah, um, I just want to add to, to Ms. Patton's comment. Um, my concern is especially with the issue of roommate or housemate. Um, you know, I think all of us, in the not-too-distant past, have had roommates or housemates who, who we weren't, we didn't have an interest, a financial interest with, or romantic interest with, but they were, for a matter of convenience, or, um, saving on the rent, or answering an ad, you know, place to espresso, you find a, you end up with a roommate, um, or a housemate, based on circumstances, not of your choosing, um, and perhaps not even to your liking, but, uh, I don't think that their status, um, or that, that what they, what a roommate or a housemate does should be of any bearing, um, or, or should be included in this, uh, in any sort of list of relatives, because they aren't there for, you know, six months, or one year, or maybe a couple of years, and roommates and housemates, I think, as all of us know, come and go. And, um, and so, I guess if, if, I, I just have issue with having those two parties in. Um, my concern with the domestic partner, um, status is just that, that I think all of us have different definitions of what a domestic partner is, and, and Mr. Holt's had proposed some language, and I presume that if that were, or the phrase domestic partner stays in, that we'd want to make sure that there's some, um, that there's a definition in the definition section that, that appropriately states what the domestic, a domestic partner is, just because we've got definitions, um, probably at state level, certainly at the local and, uh, university, that are quite different. We want to make sure there's a, a starting point and an ending point for domestic partner, because unlike relatives, um, and I suppose, similar to spouses, there's, there can be a beginning and an ending point. I think it's important to, to have that clearly stated, clearly defined. Um, just because there's, when there's an issue of, um, you can always ask a, an ethics, the ethics advisor about it, but if the, if a prosecutor goes after you, you end up, you could end up spending thousands of dollars and have your name completely smeared, even if, after, you know, a trial, or a commission hearing, or that sort of thing, you're found to be, uh, to not have committed whatever the, the violation is of, of the ordinance, um, you know, we should, we should make, I think, make the ethics ordinance as clear as possible, so that there isn't, the, so much ambiguity, um, that, that you end up walking on A shells throughout, uh, throughout, any city council term, or any employee, um, would end up walking on A shells as well.
If I could, uh, respond to that comment, um, I, I think it's really not accurate to say that you have no financial, uh, ties to your roommate or housemate. Every landlord I know of in this city, uh, requires all the members, uh, who are renting a house or an apartment, uh, to co-sign. I can't think of, uh, any landlord who does not, uh, apply, uh, that rule. I see Ms. Patton shaking her head, so perhaps she'd like to, uh, you know, give me examples, but, uh, that is certainly, uh, my experience. But even suppose there isn't a, uh, direct, uh, financial tie, you know, I, with a roommate, suppose you're living in the University of Illinois dormitories, so they'd only, uh, ask you to co-sign for, uh, your roommate. You're living in somebody in a small enclosed space, uh, you know, that's, uh, whatever the size of those dorms is, 15 feet by 10 feet, with, you know, three people living in there, and it's going to be very hard for you to objectively, uh, consider, uh, an issue in which they have, uh, a financial interest, uh, just for the simple fact that you want to get along with them until the end of the semester, or the end of the year, uh, whenever they, uh, move. So, I think that, you know, who you live with is, uh, a vital, uh, relationship, and, um, I don't think it, uh, it's something that we ought to, you know, lightly dismiss, because, um, I would have been very hard put, uh, at, at any point to cast a vote against somebody, uh, that I live with, uh, even if I thought that was the right thing to do as, as a member of city council. So, I would strongly, I mean, in the strongest terms, urge you to leave that in. I think it's a very obvious and clear conflict of interest. Ms. Patton?
Here's what's wrong with that, that whole, that whole argument. This law totally does not address your voting on a development agreement that will be financially beneficial to your golf partner. Same guy you've been going golfing with for 20 years, who's your best buddy, okay? And that, that's, when I, when I look at that, even the list in the gift bands about the, you know, the, your spouse's father, you know, your spouse's father could hate you, and maybe doesn't even let you into his house, because you're the wrong religion, and they objected to the marriage, but under, but if we threw that in there, under the law, that's a conflict of interest. But all of your associates, the people who really matter to you in life, your close friends, the people you have dinner with, the people whose, whose, you know, children are friends with your children, all that, they're not counted here. That you can, you can actually have, and I think, uh, often, elected officials do vote on matters that affect people who are much more important in their lives than, um, their blood relatives, people who, they would feel much more uncomfortable, disappointing, um, and, uh, and I might just use golf partners as an example, but people who are your, your, um, friends and associates, but with whom you have no, um, no financial relationship. And I would, um, I would guess that when lawmakers, you know, consider these laws, that, uh, that was, that, that they consider all those things, which is why this particular provision that we're being asked to make part of municipal law is not part of state law. Again, I, what I brought up earlier tonight, the book that we got from Illinois Municipal League cites state Supreme Court rulings that a city, that an elected official can vote, may vote on contracts with companies owned by their spouse. The law allows you to do that, which I do find incredible myself, but if the law allows me to vote to grant a contract to my husband, how can, how can we, we say that that's okay, but the law should prohibit me, and make it a crime for me to vote on a contract involving a person who, uh, I don't know, housemate, who's my landlord? I go rent a room on, on, on the house on, on Oregon and, uh, and Kohler, and whether you know the guy I rent from who lives in the house shows up here six months later asking for something? Now, I might very well personally choose to abstain, because I don't want to get in the middle of that, but to say that I'm breaking the law as though that in any way puts one single penny in my pocket. It doesn't. And as though, and, and my relationship with that person will terminate in six months, forever. Yet, you want to make that an unlawful, a crime, an unlawful conflict of interest, while we still allow elected officials to, um, to vote on deals that line the pockets of their friends generously, just because they're, their relation to their friend is not housemate, fiance, or aunt or uncle. That's the inconsistency I see with all this. I think the key issue is, you know, getting back to, the, the conflict of interest provisions exist to prevent self-dealing by public officials. And so, the whole question is, does the public official get, notwithstanding the state Supreme Court's allowing you to vote on the contract with your spouse, the question in conflict of interest should be, is the comp, is, is the elected official going to benefit financially from the decision? And anytime that the public official or, um, or their, their firm, partnership, association, or corporation benefits financially from a decision made here, the official should abstain. And, and voting on such a decision would be a conflict of interest. But it seems, well, I won't say it's arbitrary, but it seems a far stretch to include a lot of different relationships that are not financial, and that have no bearing on the, on the, or that are not affected by the actual decision that, that would be voted on by the official, um, in a conflict of interest law. It just doesn't make sense to me.
I have to say, I'm a little puzzled... I have to say, I'm a little puzzled by Ms. Pat's logic on this. What you seem to be suggesting is that since state law allows you to vote on a contract going to your wife, the city of Urbana shouldn't pass a law denying that either, because you could still vote on contracts that go to your golf partner. And I don't, I mean, simply because you can't regulate every, you know, possible conceivable conflict of interest doesn't mean that you shouldn't regulate those which clearly exist. And that's why this law is needed, because under state law, at least under that Supreme Court decision, you can vote on a contract to your wife. And that's ridiculous. And it ought not to be allowed. And this ordinance would not allow it. And you ought not to be allowed to vote on a contract to a corporation whose board you sit on. Or, you know, on contracts that are going to your roommate. I mean, it's a, it's a basic fundamental thing. And obviously, we can't reach, you know, golf partners or poker buddies or that sort of thing. But that's no reason not to deal with those plain and obvious conflicts of interest that are there and that can be dealt with and that everybody recognizes as conflicts of interest. Ms. Wyman?
I have two questions. I guess one is for Mr. Holtz on this issue of conflict of interest and relations. Would there be a problem? I mean, it seems that, that one of the main issues is, as Ms. Pat is talking and others are talking, that maybe golf partners, political campaign contributors, it seems like that's more, that might be more getting at the heart of, of what Mr. Otto is, and what this ethics ordinance looks at as, as the complex of interest. Why, why we need to stay with certain blood relatives that we haven't known for 31 years or that sort of thing, as opposed to, to getting really at the heart of, of relationships and who matters most, if we're going to do that? And just, I guess, a reaction about that. The other concern I have is with, I mean, I'll just put on another example with roommate or housemate. And Mr. Otto can correct me if I'm wrong, but if I recall back when, when he and I worked together, what, 2000? No, it was longer ago than that. You worked, you lived in a rooming house on Washington Street. And I guess I, sometimes when I was reading through this ordinance, I thought, housemates. You're living in, you know, you're renting a room, you know, whether it's, well, somewhere in the community, and you've got, other people are renting rooms and you have separate leases, I presume. What's, who's to know what, who you're, who the other people who are living there this week or next week, next month, or at any time are, and what businesses they're in and that sort of thing? I mean, people have such different circumstances. And that's one of the things that jumped out at me as I was thinking about this idea of roommate and housemate is the number of people who, because of various circumstances or financial issues, will live in a house, rent a room or live with others in a communal house. And, and it just seems to me, again, kind of an arbitrary thing and something that, that isn't going to end up taking people out of decisions, even when they're not aware what their housemate or roommate business, or what business they're actually involved in or that, that the business comes before. And I think I read in this, in the conflict of interest book from the municipal league that, or maybe it's in part, one of the statutes, that the fact that one doesn't know, again, doesn't know that, that you're a relation, a third cousin, or doesn't know that your housemate, someone renting a room in the house, happens to be in the business that you're voting on or, or involved in the business whose contract is before you, I think, as I understand it right, doesn't, doesn't make you innocent of, of the proposed crime. And so that's why I think it's important to keep it a tighter definition. So again, you don't end up accidentally or, or, you know, accidentally voting on something you're not aware that there is a conflict of interest, or where there really isn't a conflict of interest because you don't have any interest in this person who also rents in your house. I don't, I don't see that as, I don't see it as important or necessary to keep in the exceptions or the recipients who, for whom you should be abstaining on votes or prosecuted if you do vote.
In answer to your comment, I was always aware of who was living in the same house that I was. I mean, it's true that we had separate leases, but, you know, that, you do know who those people are and who's not washing their dishes, and you know them better than you might wish that you did sometimes. But that doesn't change the fact that in the effort to get along, if one of those people came to city council and had, you know, something that was financially meaningful to them. And I can't imagine that I would not recuse myself and, you know, and would go ahead and vote on it even though they lived in the same house that I did. I, that just, it seems like the most sort of obvious thing to do. The other question that you raised was the question of, thought about an inadvertent violation of the ordinance if you're not aware of it. I guess I'd have to read the ethics book more clearly because not being aware of it, at least in state law, there are some offenses, such as speeding, where they very clearly state that, you know, ignorance is no defense. But in most criminal statutes, you do have some level of intent requirement where you have to at least be aware of the relationship. And if that's a point of ambiguity that would hold people up from, you know, voting for an effective ethics ordinance, we can certainly clarify that and, you know, add language to say that you have to be aware of this because the, you know, the point is not to try to, you know, hang people up on relationships of which they have no idea, but to deal with evident conflicts of interest. And so, you know, I'd be happy to entertain an amendment to that effect. Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask a question. You know, we have, what, three levels of government? And, you know, highest level government is, you know, the United States with the Constitution, et cetera. And so they have the laws at the federal level. And a state can make any laws they want to, as long as it does not conflict with federal laws. And so consequently, the cities and the states should be, the city should be able to make any law we want to, you know, being home rule, as long as it does not conflict with the state law. And so if the state law says that it's not against the law to vote for some financial interest that the spouse might have, then we would be, come up with a law that's against what the state laws. Yes or no?
No. The way the state law is couched is it says, here's what financial conflicts of interest are. There are relationships that they cover. And in interpreting that law, courts have said, well, the state law doesn't prohibit this contract with the spouse, so that's not covered by state law. But if we go ahead and pass a law that does cover the spouse, that doesn't in any way contradict or, you know, interfere with state law, we're just simply regulating in an area where the state law is not. So I don't, I don't foresee any conflict there. Earlier, Ms. Pat raised the question with Steve Holtz over whether, under home rule authority, we could try to preempt state law. This ordinance doesn't attempt to do that. It's a, I guess it's an open question that Steve will have to answer next week over whether we could. But this is not trying to preempt state law. It's trying to regulate in areas that state law has some rather obvious loopholes. Ms. Chenoweth?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I might be a little dense in the financial arrangements of, in marriages, but it's my understanding that if, that when you're married, you own things in common. And you can have prenuptial agreements where what you brought to the marriage, you leave the marriage from if the marriage dissolves. But I guess I think about spouses, actually, anyone who you share a bank account with might fit under this, but that basically a court could find financial benefit to an official with anyone who they share a bank account with in some ways. That, you know, it's possible to subpoena, find out who you share bank accounts with, et cetera. So it seems like the amendment that's on the table, I mean, I, I completely and utterly support if public officials are benefiting in any financial way, which means that if their spouses are benefiting, my understanding is that's a financial benefit to a person based on the way marriages are conducted legally. So I think that, that in some ways, these categories that we're speaking of are already, particularly the, the important ones, when it has to do with shared bank accounts, are already taken care of without that language, that a court of law could find that there was a financial interest in, in contracting with a spouse. A domestic partner, which I, I wish we had a domestic partner registry, then we would actually know what we talk of. Or, you know, gay and lesbian people could marry, then we would know exactly what we're referring to. But that word as it stands, I really, I don't know what it means. But I certainly support defining that more clearly, and I actually think that that's a bigger job than this ordinance is itself. So it seems like the issue of spouses and other people with joint bank accounts, which really I think is the kind of most immediate interest, is taken care of with looking at financial interests of individuals.
I think you're right in that a lot of important relationships are captured by sharing joint bank accounts, but it doesn't really, I, I think it's much too narrow to just deal with situations where you're dealing with joint bank accounts. With roommate situations, for example, you're usually sharing responsibility for utilities. If they don't pay their rent, then very often you are liable for it. And I would say in the majority of cases, you're liable for it. And there is also a, I mean, the ordinance is dealing with financial conflicts of interest, but the financial interests of people with whom you have some relationships with, even if you don't have a financial relationship with them, is still something that can seriously undermine impartiality, you know? I've never shared a bank account with my grandfather, but, my grandfather is deceased. But if I had a grandparent come to city council and say, you know, I'd like to get the contract to snowplow the city lots or whatever, well, I mean, it seems obvious to me that that's a situation where I ought to recuse myself, even though I've never shared a joint bank account. I don't even have formal financial responsibility for them. To vote no on that issue would be a tremendously difficult thing. And so the proper thing to do is to recuse myself. And if he's the best provider, then the other six members of city council should be able to come to that conclusion without, you know, my input on the matter. And, you know, that's the, that's the other thing that sometimes gets lost in the talk of conflict of interests, is that it's not that the person can't, you know, be involved in these contracts or, you know, be involved publicly. The other six members of city council can still, you know, if something is worthy and worthwhile, or a person is worthy and worthwhile, can go ahead and decide to fund them or their contract or their organization or whatever. And we ought to have every confidence that that will, you know, in fact, happen. If it's truly a meritorious, you know, project, you know, it's only, the only time that it would make any difference that you recused yourself, if it was a close call. And if it's a close call, then you certainly should recuse yourself and should not be the deciding vote in an area where, you know, that there's controversy over whether or not something is a good idea. Mr. Hayes?
In a situation like the one you just described, usually Public Works or someone of that nature will go out with a request for a proposal. And they will bring it back to the council as to which proposal they would think is the best proposal. And it wouldn't have anything to do with, you know, how you voted, because you're not getting anything directly, you know, from the, from the request.
Sure. When Public Works or Community Development or whoever's awarding the contract comes to city council and says, here who we, here's who we think, you know, the best person is, you should though recuse yourself, because if they are the best person, it'll pass without controversy. If it's a close call, then somebody with a conflict of interest shouldn't be the deciding vote, even if they weren't the person who initially brought it to council. Ms. Wyman?
I have a question on, I guess, timing issues. And Mr. Holtz, if you could help with interpretation. What, with regard to roommates or housemates, I guess, domestic partners, fiancees, spouses, what happens if you move on in life? So at one point, you are a roommate, housemate, domestic partner, fiance or spouse of, of someone like, when you're in college. And then you move on and go your separate ways, and that person then, 10 years later, 20 years later, that former roommate or housemate then comes up in council and there's a vote for a contract on their, on, on something with, in which they're involved in. Is the fact that they were at one time a roommate, housemate, fiance, spouse, domestic partner, does that then make your vote on their proposal a violation? Or, or does it have to be something going on right at the, at the time? Because the way I read it, it would mean that if you were ever, and obviously with relatives, you always are whether you want to or not, but with the roommates or housemates, domestic partners, fiancees and spouses, there's a starting point and, and sometimes an ending point. And I'm just wondering, do those have to be at the same time to be a conflict or not?
But it might be, it might be useful to address that specifically with language, but I would treat it very much the same as, as board membership or, or ownership of a corporation or something like that. You know, you could have owned a corporation, but you're no longer part of it. And I would see that that conflict that arose because of your ownership would no longer be there. In other words, contemporaneous existence of those relationships.
Okay. But right now, it's, that's not, right now, I guess I see it as right now some ambiguity, so you'd have to do the changes. Is that right? Or as an, as an advisor, you'd say, you're all, you're fine?
Well, I, yeah, it'd be easy enough to do. So for instance, if you look at the language that, that relates to firms, partnerships, associations, corporations, it says, well, it refers to the present tense. So it says, or for the benefit of that person, or to any firm partnership, et cetera, to which that person is a board member, is a board member. So in other words, it's contemporaneous. Not was or, or used to be a long time ago, but it's contemporaneous. And it'd be easy enough to fix that same problem with the, with the roommate, housemate, fiance, spouse types of relationships as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would the movant and the secondor on the amendment to the main motion, consider amending their amendment to read, including, but not limited, to any person to whom that person has a relationship described in section 2-205-6?
No, I'm sorry. I, my, my, the purpose of my motion is to remove that portion of this provision that extends something far more restrictive than state, the state legislature or the state courts have enacted. And I think that that, that you've still got this big, long list of people that are a position, but not necessarily a relationship, a real relationship depending on the individual official. official.
Mr. Mayor.
I think it's a real disgrace that we would want to model ourselves after the state of Illinois, whose officials have been nailed to the wall for corruption for year after year after year. If we set that bar as our standard, well, we don't have a bar, and we would, we should do better than that, and if we call ourselves a progressive community, we can do better than that. And to eliminate that part of this proposed ordinance is a disgrace, and there should be something in there, and I think at a minimum, what is listed as relatives and domestic partners and so forth in Section 2-205.
I mean, I don't really see, what's the point of passing an ethics ordinance that allows you to vote on a contract involving your wife or your roommate who you have a financial, most people have financial relationships with? I mean, that's just, it really makes a mockery of the word ethics to say that that's okay. And to say that, you know, "Well, state law doesn't regulate it, so we're not going to either." That's the whole point of putting this ordinance together and putting it in place, is because state law has these, you know, glaring gaps, and, I mean, we're not even going so far as to say, "Your wife or roommate can't have a contract with the city." We're just saying, "You can't vote on it." And that just seems like a bare minimum of what any ethical person would expect in conduct from their public officials. Ms. Pat.
Well, I do not share the mayor's and Mr. Otto's strong belief that the members of the appellate court are not ethical individuals, and when they ruled in People versus Simpkins and Hollister versus North, they, I suppose you could just say they were corrupt, and I don't know if you know their names and you want to say their names out loud, and that they were disgraceful, and that the laws of the state of Illinois disgraced the people of the state, I do not agree. I think that what you are attempting to do here comes from a legitimate place in your heart, but you are missing the point about making unlawful something that should not be against the law. And it should not be unlawful for an elected official to vote on a matter which has absolutely zero financial impact on that elected official. As Mr. Holtz explained to us in our, in answering the questions that we've asked in an attempt to get this clarified, it depends on the situation, and that's really the point. It depends on the situation. And in some situations, a person who happens to be a son-in-law, or a niece, or a housemate, may well be a person with whom the official has such a relationship that the official should recuse himself or herself of any decision. And in other cases, a person who might be a son-in-law, or a niece, or a housemate, may be a person of, who the elected official does not have any type of relationship with at all. I personally cannot imagine voting on a matter that affected any one of a number of persons on this long list, but then I can, based on my own personal situation and who I know and my relatives and whatnot, I could pull out folks whose business is not my business, and as I explained earlier with my little story, whose identity is not even necessarily known to me. And I think we should take care in creating law to not make unlawful something that is not wrong, and something that some future persons might, might do without any corrupt intention or corrupt effect. So I do, I do not support including this language, because it's far too broad and arbitrary, and it is contrary to the law of the state of Illinois, not the corruption of nasty officials, but the laws made by the courts of the state of Illinois. And I respect the courts of the state of Illinois, and I do not think it is a disgrace for the members of this city council to make decisions consistent with those decisions made by the higher courts of our state.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, I certainly agree that we shouldn't be penalizing somebody when they don't have a genuine, where they don't have a genuine financial interest. On the other hand, we should make the ethics ordinance be something where ethics make a difference, and so we should include in here somewhere, if an elected official chooses or doesn't believe that they have a financial interest, and everybody else believes they do, we ought to make, we ought to include that in this ordinance somewhere. And to leave that out is just a glaring exclusion that does not put ethics into this ethics ordinance. That's all there is to it.
Ms. Wyman.
Well, I think, I actually don't think we're that far apart, but I think that there's a disparate understanding, or different understanding of it. And I think a lot of this issue of the conflicts of interest is resolved, actually, in what Mr. Otto inserted into Section 2-207, the conflicts of interest, the first statement, "No elected official or citizen appointee may participate in, vote upon, or otherwise act on any matter in which that person is directly or indirectly financially interested." Now, beside the fact that we're not clear on what is indirectly financially interested, and Mr. Holtz says that the state statute and case law isn't, I believe, clear on that, if someone is directly, at least directly financially interested in it, there's, you solve the problem. You've, you show that under this ordinance, this addition, that that person would be violating the ordinance by voting on it if they, if they are financially interested. What the amendment takes out is what could, what I think is an arbitrary listing, I mean, it's a comprehensive listing, but it's arbitrary as far as what creates a conflict of interest. And I think sometimes in leaving it, the more, I think it's more clear and more understandable when you, when you have it stated as the financial interest, and for that reason, it makes sense to have the corporation association, because that's obviously a financial relationship. But by taking out that extra language of various familial relationships or housing relationships, you get rid of what in many, or perhaps most, most circumstances, wouldn't be a conflict of interest, and would simply be creating it despite the fact that there is no financial interest. So I think that it, that by passing this ordinance as amended, it, we're clearly, we're clearly stating that, to the extent one can clearly state indirect financial interest without any case law definition or statutory definition, we're clearly saying you can't participate in this or vote on this if you've got a direct or indirect financial interest, and one doesn't need the extra, the extra familial status or housing status. To clarify that, because I think it's, it's pretty clear, financial interest, you don't vote, and if you don't have that financial, that pecuniary interest, then, then you're okay, unless you're uncomfortable voting on it for whatever reason, and then, under separate ordinance of the city, you don't have to vote. I just want to throw out one other circumstance. There was a vote, actually, maybe a year or two ago, that came before council, I think, from zoning board, or from, maybe it was from plan commission, and I knew the petitioner, as obviously we know most of the petitioners, for zoning changes, but I felt that I was concerned that my vote would be impacted by the, by the fact that I admire this person who came in front of council and would not be comfortable voting against, or voting on, on that petition, so I recused myself, despite the fact that there wasn't any pecuniary interest, any financial interest, or any relationship, or relation at all. And that's something that can be done, again, whether someone feels, whether there is a financial interest or not, just because that's something that our other ordinances at the city allow. But I think, just in summary, that by having the language Mr. Otto already stated in the first sentence of Section 2-207A, that it resolves any issues, and the deletion gets rid of the arbitrary concern. Thank you.
I guess, you know, we're, what's being advocated is to leave in place a huge gaping hole in the current state law, and to say that, "Well, judges interpreted the state law as it's written, and they're not corrupt, so it must be okay." I have too much respect for Mrs. Pat to believe that she takes that argument seriously, or thinks that the rest of us do either. I just, I guess I'm at a loss for words. This seems to me like a very simple, straightforward ordinance, and we've attempted to add as much clarity as possible by being detailed in listing the categories of relationships. We've offered responses to criticisms, specifically the one about, "Well, what about relationships that you don't know about?" We can add a paragraph to this ordinance that specifically states that you must be aware of the relationship for it to be a violation of the ordinance, and that answers that question about, you know, the third cousin, or whatever. But that's no reason not to go ahead and deal with those situations that we all know. We very clearly know are conflicts of interest, ones that involve spouses, domestic partners, however you define it, roommates, parents. I mean, we ought to deal with that. Urbana's a good city, and we ought to provide guidance on, to our public officials in terms of what we expect and the standard of comment, of conduct that we expect public officials to uphold in this city. So I'm going to go ahead and make the following motion. I move to amend Section 2-207A, well, to amend the amendment to the main motion to read "including but not limited to any person to whom that person has a relationship described in Section 2-204, or 2-205, Paragraph 6." So moved. Okay. If there's no second, that motion dies for lack of a second.
Call the question on the motion to amend.
Second.
We have a motion to call the question in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion, to call the motion?
Ms. Chenoweth? Yes. Mr. Hayes? Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
The question then is on the motion to amend the main motion to delete from Section 2-207A the language "including but not limited to whom that person is related by blood or marriage in any domestic partner, roommate, or housemate." Am I correctly stating the motion to amend?
From the words "or to any family," and ending at the end of the sentence, of that person.
Okay. All right. That's the motion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Excuse me?
Yes.
For clarification, we're now voting on the amendment to the main motion?
That's right.
Okay.
No, we voted on the motion to call the question. Now we're voting on the amendment to the main motion.
Little.
Yeah. Sorry.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
No.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
The issue before the council now is the main motion. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries with six ayes, and the next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2004-06-068, an ordinance amending the City of Urbana Code of Ordinance, curfew for minors. Ms. Pat?
Actually, the minutes were, I mean, we could wait a little longer on that, but we did get the information.
Oh, okay.
If you want to do the minutes first, we could do that.
All right. If there's no objection, then we'll return to consideration of the minutes. Ms. Pat?
You were correct.
Okay.
The email that was, that had come from Jerry Parr was forwarding, the message, the content message of it was from, was from another person.
Okay. All right. So if there's no objection, then the minutes will be amended to delete. Jerry Parr is one of those people who sent emails opposing, opposing the at-large member. And so now, the question is approval of the minutes. Is there any further additions or corrections of the minutes? Okay. I believe we have a motion in a second, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
And that was a, just for clarification, a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Now we're on to the curfew ordinance. Mr. Holtz.
Hey, well, you've had this material before you. I think this is now the second or third time, I'm not sure how deep I need to get into it, other than to say that, that the state of Indiana, pardon, state of Indiana had a curfew ordinance, in many ways, in many respects, similar to what Urbana has, that curfew ordinance of the state of, curfew law of the state of Indiana was reviewed by the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals, that's the federal court that, that has jurisdiction over our three-state area, Illinois, Indiana, and Wisconsin. That court ruled that the Indiana ordinance was unconstitutional because it had a variety of defects. As a consequence of that, it, I concluded that Urbana's ordinance, much like most curfew ordinances around the tri-state area, would be held unconstitutional as well, directed our police department to stop enforcement of that curfew ordinance until such time as it was amended to correct those constitutional deficiencies. The constitutional deficiencies really fall into two categories. One is that the court said, "Look, there's, there's free speech concerns here for the, for the juveniles who would be out past these curfew hours, and these laws don't have enough exceptions to address those kinds of free speech concerns." So for that reason, the court said that that law is unconstitutional. The court also said that it's unconstitutional for a second reason, and that is that, that although it allows certain kinds of defenses, it does not require the police officer at the time of making the stop of the juvenile to, to find out whether or not those defenses exist. What the court said would be required would be for the officer to have to find out from the kid at the time of the stop out there on the street, whether or not he's, he's got one of these other legitimate reasons for being out there, and if the kid does, then the officer should not issue a citation for it or, or conduct an arrest. So those two reasons, basically, the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals said rendered that Indiana statute unconstitutional. Urbana's, I conclude, is unconstitutional for the same reasons, and the proposal that I put forth before you a few weeks ago has language to remedy those things. I'll entertain any questions.
Are there any questions? Ms. Chenoweth?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Where did the time periods come from that are in, on the top of page two?
Top of page two of the ordinance?
Yeah, what are the, where did they come from? The 12 to 6, 12 to 6, 11 to 6.
You'll have to ask one of the predecessor city councils. These are the times that are in there right now, that have been in there since before I was with, with the City of Urbana in any capacity. My guess is that they, that they were copied from the state law. Urbana's curfew ordinance is, in its operative provisions, word for word, identical to the state law, so my guess is it was just copied.
Okay. Second, so this is...
Second, so this is identical to the state law, you believe?
Those times, yes.
Okay. So there is a state curfew law that if our law is not in effect, the state law takes effect, or what, how does this?
Yeah, I don't know what the status is of the state, of any attempts to amend the state curfew law. My, my assumption is that the state curfew law, the State of Illinois curfew law, would be held unconstitutional for the same reasons. In fact, when I, when I directed our police department to stop enforcing the Urbana curfew ordinance, I also directed them to stop enforcing the state curfew law for the same reasons. But I do not know the status of any attempts by the state legislature to amend it, to fix those constitutional problems.
Okay. My second question is, under exceptions, I guess this is additional language, let's see, Section C, number one, it says, an exception would be if they, minors accompanied or supervised by the minor's parent, legal guardian, or other responsible companion at least 18 years of age, years of age, approved by the minor's parent or legal guardian. How does a minor demonstrate approval, that kind of approval?
Well, it's been a common practice among our police officers. When the, when the kid is with, with someone who appears to be 18 years old or over, they, they check up on that person and they call the minor's parents. And I've seen that in reports over and over again. Hey, I found your kid out here, he's with so-and-so. Is that okay? And the parent says, well, either yes, or, or heck no, he's not supposed to be with that person.
What happens then if the, like so many cases where the phone may ring at three or four o'clock in the morning and no one picks it up? What, what does a officer do if they cannot find out whether or not the person's approved of? Do they then take that person in, or do they release that person? Because they can't determine.
Yeah, are you talking about the juvenile?
The juvenile, yeah.
Yeah. You know, off the top of my head, I couldn't say, maybe Chief Adair could answer that question better than I could.
Yeah, I guess the question is, are you kinda innocent until proven guilty, and, or are you guilty until proven innocent? At least when you have a stop that's made, does the officer assume that the person is not an approved-of companion?
In those instances, if the only issue is a curfew violation, in practice, more than likely, we would attempt to take him or her home. We take far more kids home than we issue citations to.
Okay, and so by taking the child home, you can then confront the parents or guardian and say, does this person have permission to be out? And if at that point, the parent were to give, under the new ordinance, the parent were to say, yes, you know, I sent Johnny out with his older brother to get a loaf of bread because, you know, we have a breakfast tomorrow, then?
That would be the end of the matter.
It would be the end of the matter?
Yes.
Okay. So let me ask a third question, third and final question. What about those instances where minors are kicked out of the house? It's my understanding, from working with teenagers, that it's, it is not illegal, so it is legal for a parent to say, get out of my house and don't come back. So in those situations, that person is on the street, that minor's on the street, they do not have, they've been told they do not have the ability to come home, and they are out after curfew because they have no place that they actually can be. In that instance, what would we do? Would that person be brought home? Would they be cited with curfew? Would they be given a ticket? What happens to the person when they really don't have a place to go?
We would take them to the Round Barn or some other social agency. We wouldn't leave them on the street.
Okay.
Because of their age, they were in violation of curfew.
Okay. Would they receive a ticket? Also, I'm talking about homeless teens. Would they, or, or children?
Under those circumstances, we could place them with a social agency, that would be the end of it.
Okay. But according to this ordinance, Mr. Holtz, they could receive a ticket, is that correct? I mean, it may be that that's not the common practice of this, of this department, and certainly isn't a humane practice, but is it, is the ordinance such that, you know, I don't see in this, one of the exceptions being that you're homeless? So that means that you could be eligible for a ticket?
Well, I guess this gets back to the whole intent thing that Mr. Otto brought up in the previous discussion. You know, there, there does have to be an intent to violate the law. And if, if the kid has no choice, been kicked out of the house, and I'm not sure that I, I'm not sure that I agree with anybody's statement that a parent has the authority to kick a kid out of the house, a juvenile out of the house, and just leave him on the street. There may be some gaps in how social service agencies, or the DCFS, or anybody like that deals with that situation, but that doesn't make it necessarily lawful. I, but, you know, staying away from the question of whether or not it's lawful, you know, there's this, there's this intent requirement. You have to, you have to mean to do it. And if you don't have the intent, then, then it's not a violation.
So what's the procedure? Do you get a ticket and then you have to prove the intent? Or is it?
At all times, at all times, for a prosecutor, if intent is an element of an offense, the prosecutor has the obligation of proving intent, just the same as the prosecutor has the obligation to prove any other element of the offense. So for the curfew ordinance, I have to prove not only that it was somebody who was underage, but I also have to prove that they were out past those certain hours, and I have to prove that they meant to be. If I don't prove all three of those things, every one of them, then I don't have a conviction. And so this is the kind of review that, that my office looks at with every case that it files. Every time we have a police report or some kind of incident report that comes in and says so-and-so committed this violation, we look at it and we, and we compare what the report says with what the elements of the offense are. If there's any gap in any, any element of the offense, so if we can prove four out of five elements, but we can't prove that fifth one, then we don't file the charge. We, we, we're bound by the obligation to prove, to file only those charges as to which we have reasonable basis to believe that we could prove.
So the sit, so the onus is on the city rather than on the defendant?
Yes.
That's all I have for now.
Ms. Wyman?
How long does this stay on a minor's record if they're found in violation of the curfew ordinance?
Well, there, for city curfew ordinance violations, there is, there is no criminal record, per se. It doesn't go into any criminal databases, anything like that. If it were a state charge, I'd have to look back at that again. It would probably be brought under the Juvenile Courts Act, and the Juvenile Courts Act has its own procedures for how long things stay, and, and certain kinds of things can be purged. My guess would be that ordinance violations, or, or curfew types of violations could be purged from a record.
And when officers find juveniles in violations ordinance, do they charge them with violations of the local ordinance, or, or the local and the state ordinance? Or how does that work?
One or the other. The bulk of them, we charge local, because again, it's a civil process, and if there's no other charge involved, we would cite him or her with the local.
Okay. Could they be charged with, with both?
I don't believe so.
You don't?
It's not our practice to do that.
Thank you.
Is there any other, sorry, your chairman's napping. Other questions or comments for Mr. Holtz? All right, then a motion would be in order.
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Pat?
Thank you. I, it was in the pack, and I filed a motion to amend, which would be under the list of exceptions on Section 1563, subsection C2. These would be the conditions that do not, that do not constitute a violation of the law, and it would be to add, under Section 2, is participating in going to or returning from without any detour or stop and with permission of the minor's parent or guardian. I move to add a section, to rename Section GH, and to add a Section G that says, an activity approved by the minor's parent, legal guardian, or custodian.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. All right. So that's now part of the main motion. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Ms. Chenoweth?
I would ask the, the motioner to take as a friendly amendment, adding a number five to C. So an additional exception is, or the two words is homeless. So during the curfew hours, if the minor is homeless, would be one of the conditions. Hold on a second, I gotta find, find it. I'll, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? If there's no further discussion, the motion is to approve the curfew ordinance as presented to City Council with an amendment to Section 15-63 subsection C. Exceptions, subsection two, rename G as H, and add a new paragraph, G, an activity approved by the minor's parent, legal guardian, or custodian, and add a new subsection five, reading is homeless. Is that correct? Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Ms. Pat?
I'd also like to make a motion to request that staff draft for consideration at the next City Council meeting, an ordinance amending Section 1-18 of the Code of Ordinances to replace the minimum fine schedule for certain violations, 1563, curfew for minors with, curfew for minors, first violation, $25, curfew for minors, second violation, $50, curfew for minors, third violation, $75.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Can I ask, what is the current fine schedule for first, second, and third violations?
Yeah, we might need some clarification here, Ms. Pat. I think that the motion, pardon me, the ordinance that I, that was presented and just voted on had language in it about changing the fines already.
Can I ask, I, I, Steve, I know as we spoke, you and I spoke about this.
Yes.
I was, I wanted to just leave the language in the ordinance here, but then there was the question of whether it could be paid by mail, and my recollection is that you told me in order for these fines that are in the ordinance to be able to pay by mail, we had to put it in Section 118.
Yes, that's correct.
So that's what I'm trying to do here, is get it into 118. And, and I don't, I don't know if I did it correctly. My understanding from our interaction was that it needs, if we want more than the first violation to be paid by mail, we need to list them as separate, separate violation, or separate offenses with different fines. So that, that's what the intent is here, is if you've got a better way to do it, I'm all for it.
No, no, the approach is fine, it's just that what, that, that the way the motion was phrased, that you just voted on, was to, was to amend the curfew language as presented in my proposal, plus the amendments that were made on the floor. And my proposal already had fines language in there. I think it's fine for you to undo that now with another.
Oh, sorry. Are you saying the fine amounts are different, or the way? I'm trying to, I'm trying to get it back into Section 118 to be able to be paid by mail, which is, and I thought this was the way you told me we should do it, but that was, that wasn't, that wasn't the part we did by email, that was oral, and so I may have misunderstood.
I think you understood correctly. If you look at the actual ordinance, page three, paragraph E, and F, as renumbered, you'll see that, that it already addresses those fines. But I, I think that what you're, what you're suggesting right now with, with another motion about putting this into Schedule 1-18 is fine, just be aware that that would undo what you just voted on here, and these paragraphs.
How would it undo it? All right, actually, rather than asking that, what do we need to do to make these, what we just, what we just passed, to make them pay by, eligible for paid by mail? That's all I'm trying to do here.
Rather than trying to hash it out by, by committee here, why don't I come back with language? If that's, if that's the intent of the council in general, why don't I come back with language that does that?
For paid by, so I should just make a motion to request that staff draft an ordinance so that these, the fines for this ordinance can be paid by mail?
That would be fine.
Okay, I can, can I withdraw my motion and make that motion instead? That was my intent.
There's no objection? All right, let's go ahead. That's acceptable to the secondary as well?
I have a question on that, though.
Okay. Ms. Pat, or Ms. Wyman?
On that, so on Section E, we've got, it's a little different than the, the actual fine amounts of 25, 50, and 75, and that third, or subsequent times could be up to 200. And I'm wondering if the intent is to allow that, or to keep it as the maximum of 75?
I guess it's whatever you want. I just want, really, I'm thinking first offense should be able to pay by mail, and, and that was 25, and then went to 50. That's where I started at, and I, I did not actually pay close attention to that. But since, since we're just asking staff to bring it to us, if it's okay, to just see what Mr. Holtz comes up with, and then if people wanna fuss about numbers of a later date, we can, would that be all right, given the hour?
I'm, I actually like the fact that, that the first fine would be as little as $3. I think that recognizes that there are some times when the, the curfew violation isn't that serious, and, and the different economic circumstances that families find themselves in. So I'll look forward to seeing that, whenever you're ready.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right, next we have ordinance number 2004-08-099, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Developer Agreement, Urban League of Champaign County Development Corporation Lease Purchase Program fiscal year 2004, 2005. Mr. Gruy.
Thank you. The, the agreement, the home agreement with the Urban League of Champaign County is for their lease purchase program. It was identified in the annual action plan that we approved in May. And this agreement would provide Urban League with $74,995 for that, that program. The agreement is very similar, if not nearly identical, to the agreement that council reviewed early spring for Urban League's lease purchase agreement. Considering that, I'll, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Gruy? Mr. Hayes? Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, page three of 49. Yeah, could you, could you explain that? Third paragraph down from affordability, home assisted housing must be acquired by the homeowner under the program within 36 months from the date of initial occupancy, and remain the principal residence of the family during the five-year affordability period. Now, what do you mean it's 36 months? You know, he signs a paper, he's supposed to go through closes and all this other kind of thing. Where does the 36 months come in?
Good point. The, the 36 months is the period that, when Urban League starts the program, let me back up, they buy a house that's identified by the potential home buyer. That home buyer can rent that house, or lease that house, for up to 36 months, until they close on a permanent mortgage to buy the house. So Urban League has a 36-month window to get a home buyer in position to close on a permanent mortgage to buy the house. And they potentially could go through, one home buyer might rent there and maybe not get their credit and other things in order to, to close, so they could bring another program participant in. But whatever the case, from the initial time of what they buy that house initially, they've got 36 months to get a permanent, if you will, a home buyer in it with a, a mortgage, et cetera.
So the, I was looking at it from the point of view of the self-sufficiency program, where the, the individuals involved, you know, go through extensive training for a period of years, and then, and they set aside a certain amount of money, and I think the Urban League matches it. And so consequently, you would think that, at that time, they would have enough money to purchase a house. That's, that's the reason I'm, I'm questioning the 36-month period. That's the reason, the question is thirty-six month period.
It's what the program allows, and that's what we put in the agreement.
Okay, second question, on page twenty-three or forty-nine. And that's supposed to be eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars, or eighty-four thousand five dollars?
Whatever the case, the price is, this is a sample agreement, and it could be used for whatever purchase price the subsequent deal provides.
The purchase price of the described real estate is eighty-four thousand five dollars and no one hundreds, and then in parentheses, you've got eighty-four thousand five hundred.
Right, that's a typo. This is the contract that the Urban League.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up.
Right.
That's all I know.
Ms. Huth.
Excuse me, this conversation due to a potential conflict of interest.
Ms. Pat.
Thank you. Just a quick question, the five-year affordability period, does that start on, at the time of occupancy, or at the time that the purchase, the closing of the purchase?
At the closing, but we're there with the instruments to ensure that affordability period at the closing on the final mortgage.
So if the house is sold fewer than five years after the family buys it, it has to be sold to someone whose income fits within the income guidelines of this program? Is that correct?
Right.
And after five years, they could sell it to a millionaire, right? If one of them buys it.
Right, affordability period ceases, right.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Ms. Wyman.
Because, and I think I brought this issue up before, the affordability period always just seems so low, and is there a way by, whether it's adding a little bit of money to the, that the city contributes to this, to make the affordability longer? I think from maybe the five years to fifteen years, or something like that. I just, I think that, for the amount of money that the city puts into, to these programs, that I think it's important to ensure affordability for a longer period, and it just seems that right now the affordability, affordability period is so short that, again, it's not as much value, I think, for the community as a whole. I'm wondering what, what changes could be made, whether it's in this one or future ones, to increase the affordability period, and what sort of financial requirements that would, would bring to the city.
That's a good point. If we invested upwards or above twenty-five thousand, the home reg would take us to ten years, we could, as a city, exceed the home HUD requirements if we deemed it appropriate, and that might be something that we discuss in my next, or the next agenda item. I mean, not discuss in detail, but it might be an appropriate area to evaluate our programming.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, what it, going back to page three there, I mean, so if the council wanted to, you could, instead of saying a five-year affordability period, we could say ten years.
Urban League isn't here, but we could do that, and get Urban League's reaction, and sure, you're right.
They have a penalty if it's, if it doesn't remain the principal residence of the family for five years? Like if they sell after three years, is there some kind of penalty? I suppose that's.
Generally, we've, to this point in time, we've indicated they would resell it to a qualified household, and then we've got a provision that if for some reason that just doesn't happen, the difficulty in marketing the house, et cetera, and they sell it to someone that's not a low-income household, we would recapture a pro-rated share of any net proceeds result of the sale. So that's, that's the callback. I should note as well, that when I mentioned that we could do that in terms of making any adjustments to the agreement, we also should run any proposed changes by the consortium.
Ms. Pat.
Just when you say pro-rated share, you mean if they lived there three years, it would be, it would be two-fifths of the fifteen thousand we would get back? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Gruy? Ms. Wyman.
Sorry, just so for clarification, the amount of money that, if we were, well, what's the, the amount of money that the consortium is putting in on this?
The fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine.
And then Urban League is putting in the seventy-four nine ninety-five?
The agreement provides basically the amount of money, the seventy-four thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars is fourteen nine ninety-nine times five, to do five units.
I see.
And I think Urban League's match is some eighteen thousand dollars.
So it's a, I'm sorry, is it, how much per, how much per unit is the consortium putting in then?
The fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars.
It's for the five units?
That much per unit, yes.
Oh, per unit?
Sorry.
Okay. Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Gruy? If there's no other, can I think, do we have a motion on the table? I don't think we do. Okay, Ms. Wyman.
I would move to, I move to send this ordinance to council with a recommendation for approval with the following change, and that is to change the five-year affordability period to ten years, and with direction or request that staff consult with the consortium and the Urban League regarding the feasibility of this.
So good.
Motion and a second.
Speaking briefly to the, to the motion, with the fact that the city is putting in basically fifteen thousand dollars per unit, I think it makes sense to, to try and make the affordability longer for residents of our community. Five years, I think, just is, is not that long, and to the, and I think there's a way, and I think there's, there should be interest on the part of the city, the consortium, the Community Development Commission, to try and stretch out the affordability period with the, the small amount, or with, with the high number of homeless and near-homeless families in our community and across the country, and the high cost of housing, I think it's important to try and keep these, this housing affordable for low-income and very-low-income families. I'd love to do it as long as possible, but I think moving it from five years to ten years is a good start, and that's the purpose of, of the motion. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? I just want to clarify and make sure I understand. So if we have a ten-year affordability program, and we're contributing fifteen thousand dollars, and the homeowner loses their job, or finds another, better job in another community, and decides to move after three years, they basically get to take thirty percent of the equity, or forty-five hundred dollars, and the rest of it comes back to the city of Urbana, or to the consortium, or to the Urban League, or where does?
To the consortium, to the home account, to the consortium.
Okay.
All right, and it's, like you said, thirty percent of the proceeds.
Okay. So the, all right. All right, thank you. Ms. Pat.
I think the, the main benefit of that, of expanding the, extending the affordability period, isn't how much money we would get back, but that the, that the homeowner would be obligated under the agreement to sell the home to another household whose income is within the same guideline, so that we're, so the fifteen thousand dollar investment is getting us a longer period of affordable housing.
Yep.
And it's just, the dollar amount is just a penalty, what if they don't, but I think if that were the guideline, just like with the five-year period, if someone wants to sell after two years, they have to sell to someone whose income is, now I don't remember if I'm, what is this, sixty percent, or eighty, what are you giving, sixty or eighty percent?
I think these are eighty.
Eighty, or, whose income is below eighty percent, a very immediate.
Right. The, the reason I raise the question, and I'm not really sure, you know, what the answer is to these issues, but we might get more enlightenment next week, once the home consortium's had a chance to discuss it, but two things occurred to me. One is, there are important legitimate reasons why families have to leave the community and go somewhere else, and if they don't take with them enough equity to afford a home at their next place, that may be, in some sense, counterproductive in terms of that particular family. The other question I have is if there's only eighty-five hundred dollars left to assist the next affordable buyer, is that going to be sufficient for them to be able to get a loan and actually purchase it, or is it going to be a situation where, I just want to make sure we're not setting up poor people to be in a catch-22 because of our good intentions, where people can't make moves that they need to, and because they can't sell the house to whoever would require to buy it, because they don't have the means to buy it. That's the issue I'd like to know more about, if it's possible, if not now, then next week when it comes to City Council. Ms. Wyman.
I, I agree with your point, and I look forward to staff's comments and research on this. I think the idea I have is, or the concern I've had in the past in bringing up this issue, and, and bringing it up again tonight, is the fact that with just a five-year affordability period, the city is really sinking in fifteen thousand dollars of the city's resources. Now, a lot of it's from federal government, but still, tax money, tax dollars, for, and when it's only five years, it's really just helping out one family for five years. Now, they could move on, you could have a family move every year, but I think more realistically, it's fifteen thousand dollars for one family. And when we can extend the affordability period, the chances of helping out more families, and so spending, using, having that fifteen thousand dollars spread out, and, and again, last a lot longer, I think is, there's a higher chance of that, and that's where I, that's the idea of, of spreading out the affordability. And I think part of it is, is similar, if you look at, at public housing, you know, when you've got, or when you've got housing that is at a certain rent rate, you've got families, you know, you don't just stay there for twenty years, or thirty years, you've got a family who stays there until they can make it on their own, and move out to a different place, and afford a, a higher rent, or market rent, or larger apartment, and then another family can move in, and so it creates, so one unit actually creates housing for several, several families, year after year after year, and that's, I think, a similar idea for extending the affordability for, for housing when we're doing it in, when we're helping and working with the Urban League, and providing fifteen thousand dollars per actual unit, that it's not just helping out one family, so fifteen thousand dollars to one, but fifteen thousand dollars then will help out probably, you know, perhaps two, two or three families. And that's where I see the, the benefit of extending the affordability time limit.
Sure. I, I think that's a point that's well-taken. I don't know how much of a subsidy public, you know, housing gets on average per unit. My gut says three thousand dollars a unit a year, they probably get at least that much, which is basically about a five-year period amounts, too, for providing affordable housing to this, but that's just sort of a gut, and to some extent, I'm, I'm more interested in how this program works, and making, making sure that it works effectively. I understand Ms. Wyman's point, I think it's a point that's well, well-taken. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right, next we have a report on the framework and schedule for the preparation of the Urbana Home Consortium and City of Urbana Consolidated Plan for program years two thousand five to two thousand nine. Mr. Gruy.
Thank you. Right, as the memo indicated, we've put together a schedule, and if you will, a framework for preparing our, our next five-year plan. We've asked for council to review and provide input on this process. A little background, as a recipient of home and CDPG money from HUD, we're required to submit a five-year consolidated plan, and our last annual action plan basically put together the fifth year of, of the previous five-year plan, so now we're embarking on a, on a new effort. And in the memo, I've indicated HUD's kind of wordy take on what the consolidated plan is in italics, but we sometimes look at it, look at it in a more practical manner, as to guiding our expenditure and investment of home and CDPG funding, and making sure that any projects that we endeavor to, to invest in are consistent with the five-year plan. The, the framework is basically, what we did is took the HUD guidelines and edited them by inserting the word "submit" and then underneath there, providing a different, in a different font, just a brief narrative, or a couple of bullet points, et cetera, about how we intend to, to address the, the requirements for submitting the consolidated plan. The, the schedule that we've included, kind of a, a larger spreadsheet sort of piece that outlines some of the milestones, et cetera, to, to complete this task, actually provide guidance on, on two processes, if you will, and we wanted to sort of think of them as, as two processes. Number one is the five-year consolidated plan, which is the, the guidance document, and at the same time, in a parallel track, we'll be developing the oh-five, oh-six annual action plan, the budget instrument for our home and CDPG funds. And in terms of the fiscal impacts, we note that, you know, five years of funding, when you figure CDPG funding is floating around a half a million dollars, and, and home is at one-point-eight last year, over a five-year period, that's over eleven million dollars that this document will help, help guide, and so no small task, and, and significant impact to the, the city's, city's activities. Also included in the packet is a listing in the back of information sources that we might be able to identify, or utilize, rather, for different community development and housing activities, and also a listing of focus groups by topic area. And again, this is not comprehensive, but nearly, we'll likely find other persons that we'll invite to focus group meetings and, and public hearings. A lot of these lists and organizations were identified in the help book that you might be familiar with, it's a pretty good compilation of, of agencies in the community. We've, we maintain a pretty good listing ourselves in-house. So I don't want to take you through the entire document, since it is a bit lengthy, and if you will, you might recall the plan we submitted five years ago, the requirements are nearly the same, it's going to take a lot of, a lot of work to pull together new census data, which is nice, we've got the two thousand census data that we didn't have in, in ninety-five. We've got the, some, some new data from HUD in terms of housing information, that'll be very helpful. So it'll be, I guess what I'm getting at will be more similar than not, in terms of the format and structure of the document. Maybe rather than going into a lot of detail, I can ask if there's questions at, at this time.
Ms. Pat.
Just one, one small question. On the, the calendar spreadsheet at the back of the packet, number five newsletter and news gazette notice of hearings, and then further down, you listed two required hearings, number seven and eight. Will there be other hearings besides the required neighborhood public hearings, and required social service agency hearings, or does number five refer to notice for those two?
Your, your, number five, it refers to those in terms of our, our newsletter, we want to be sure to, to note those, and also it's a, a milestone that we would publish in the news gazette at the appropriate time for those, those meetings. And again, you're right, that is a similar format to what we've used in, in previous years.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If there's no other questions or comments, motion should be in order. Ms. Wyman.
Do we actually need a?
Oh, I guess we don't, yeah. Oh, sorry. Mr. Hayes.
I just want to ask you a question. If you go, somebody's agencies, and you look up HIV/AIDS in that block there. If you go some of these agencies and you look up HIV/AIDS in that block there. Just use the example. If there are other agencies in the community that, you know, work with these kind of programs, should they be listed or not?
It, it's not essential. This was put together for a, an outline purpose to give the reader a sense of, of the organizations involved. We sense that there's going to be, some of the focus group meetings, for instance, when we talk about special populations, where we've got maybe folks involved with HIV/AIDS, mental and physical disabilities, homelessness, that we'll have folks in the rooms that, I want to say, will help us be more comprehensive in how we look at that. Kind of a cross-pollination of, of organizations and whatnot. So it's not essential, I guess, to go back to your question, that we identify, we're not penalized if we don't list someone, but we certainly are interested in hearing any omissions.
Yeah, one of the organizations is the African-American AIDS Awareness Project.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Gruyere? Any other discussion? Okay. Thank you very much, Bob. Next, we have Resolution Number 2004-08-018R, a resolution to impose a temporary moratorium on permitting outdoor advertising sign structures until a interim development ordinance can be adopted to impose a moratorium on OASS permit issuance while the review of the number, placement, and development standards of outdoor advertising sign structures is being completed. Ms. Tyler.
Thank you. This would be the first step in kind of a three-part process to, once again, reevaluate our billboard regulations. And so this would immediately impose a moratorium on further issuance of permits for billboards. Second step would be to go to the Plan Commission with a public hearing to insert in the zoning ordinance and interim development ordinance as a placeholder. And then the third step is the actual text amendment changes that would be undertaken during a review. Topics that we would recommend assessing in the review would involve the, looking at the number of OASS and the placement of OAS, OASS in certain locations and in such a manner that they may be harmful to the community. A little bit of the background, of course, we did do amendments to our ordinance two years ago now that looked primarily, in the end, at the aesthetic regulations of OASS. Although we addressed a number of other issues, we were constrained by the provisions of the settlement agreement, which has now expired from a previous lawsuit with the senior poster. One of the concerns we have since this previous effort concluded is that we have once again seen a proliferation in the numbers of billboards. During that previous moratorium, we were at about 28 billboards in the community, and now we're between existing and proposed billboards. We would go to 38. And that includes the one that was grandfathered in as part of the previous moratorium at Vine and Main Streets. So this is a very significant increase, which is of concern. And at the same time, we've received more complaints about specific billboard placements, that there's an overlap, a competition with businesses for visibility and with the signs that businesses are allowed to put in their business zones. Freestanding signs are held to about a 50 square foot in area, whereas OASS, maybe 300 square feet. So we've received not only an increase in the number of OASS, but an increase in some of the complaints, incoming not from residents of the community, more from the business community. So we would like to take this opportunity to look at the issues of the size and the placement. One particular example that you received the letter on last week was about a billboard up at 1710 North Cunningham, which was regulated by IDOT in addition to the city. And this situation of overlapping jurisdiction has resulted in a billboard that's at a lower height than it would have ordinarily been to promote maximum visibility. So it competes with the adjoining freestanding signs. That's another issue that we would like to look at as part of this moratorium. Thirdly, there has been a request by one of the billboard companies, and there's a representative here this evening, to take a look at some newer technologies for billboards, specifically a technique called Trivision. There's an example in Champaign on North Prospect, but it allows for flipping panels so you can have three billboard messages displayed on one. And that might be an approach that the city could take if we did get to a point of limiting the number of billboards. There's lots of background information, we'll be delving into it again, case law, best practices in OASS regulation, working with the sign companies and moving ahead. And of course, in terms of fiscal impacts, billboards are useful to business. The city, in fact, uses billboards to advertise events such as Sweet Corn and Market at the Square. Our businesses use them. At the same time, they don't generate real estate tax revenue the way other commercial developments do. They just generate leasing income. They can also, when they're placed in more marginal locations, interfere with redevelopment of these sites. And so this is another concern of ours in looking at our downtown strategic plan, the downtown initiative, and our North Cunningham redevelopment plan. Is a placement of billboards compromising some of the goals and objectives of those plans? So just a list of items that we would want to review through this effort would be the issue of overlapping jurisdiction with IDOT, impacts on redevelopment opportunities, impacts on business visibility, possible need for a minimum height regulation, which we don't currently have, a look again at spacing requirements. Currently, we allow them only along the designated routes, the FAP and FAU routes, of 300 feet on each side. So we might look at the spacing, we might look at the Trivision technology, we could look at cap-and-replace approach or some kind of allocation method to reduce the proliferation, and we could look at how to deal with nonconformities as billboards are replaced, how do we bring them up to the then standards that we might adopt? So that's sort of a nutshell. This could be a lengthy process, very complex situation, and it's something that we would work with the legal department closely and would also hope to have a little more full staffing in our planning division to, to get this underway. Any questions on the resolution?
Any questions for Ms. Tyler? I guess I have more of a comment. I guess it's my understanding, once a billboard is in place, it's difficult to get rid of them for a variety of reasons. The, where possible, where a location is inappropriate or is imposing on, on the rest of the community, obviously, some, you know, getting rid of it might, would be the best one. But if it's not possible to do that, I'm interested in the use of our taxing power and how much ability do we have to tax an inappropriate outdoor advertising structure as a way of compensating the rest of the community for the burdens that those billboards are, are placing on the community, whether it's visual blight or, or making some properties difficult to redevelop. So at some point, that's something I'd be interested in learning more about. Thanks. Ms. Wyman.
I move we send this resol... Do we need to send the resolution to council for approval, or is it enough for the committee to approve it and then to go to council? Go to council?
Yeah.
I move we send this resolution to council with a recommendation for approval. Second.
A motion and second. Ms. Wyman.
Thanks. Just briefly, I appreciate staff working on this. I was on the committee, I was the council representative on, on the committee that looked at this a few, few years ago when we were still under the, the lawsuit settlement that severely constrained any action we could take. And it was clear at that time that something had to be done to rein in these outdoor advertising sign structures, these billboards, that the billboard companies obviously wanted to continue to put in, and that our hands were really tied based on the settlement that was entered into back in 1980, I think 1980 or 1981. So I think it'll be a good thing to be able to start working on some regulations, some, some appropriate spacing and height levels, and, and to make sure it doesn't interfere with, these signs don't interfere with our, our local businesses in order, without the constraints, actually, of the settlement agreement that I think was, just precluded some really, some potentially strong action to, to protect the, the health, safety, and welfare of our community. So I look forward to, to the action that, whether it's a committee, a Plan Commission and council, Plan, Plan Commission member, council member, committee with, with other staff and interested in community members, or however it's drawn up. But I think that, that action definitely is needed, and I think that this moratorium will be good to at least put the brakes on the outdoor advertising sign structure proliferation that's occurring in our community.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Okay. If there's no further question or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Tyler. The final item for the agenda tonight is additional members for Urbana Public Television Commission. Ms. Wyman.
Thank you. As you'll see in your packets, I enclosed a one-sheet, double-sided letter, or one-page, the front side is the letter and the opposite side is the current ordinance. For the Urbana Public Television Commission, there are actually seven members under the ordinance that are appointed. What I'm proposing is something, and it might sound a little confusing because council members may recall not too long ago that we approved an additional library representative and a community representative to be added onto the Urbana Public Television Commission, thus making it nine members. I think the mayor did some research or his, or legal staff did research and found out in fact that our ordinance was, the composition only allowed for seven commission members. So the change that I'm proposing would add, would, would bring back the library, a library staff person to, to the commission and would also then, to make it an uneven number, which I think is something that we try to do on our commissions and on council, to avoid, to avoid tie votes. Tie votes would also add a, a community member. And just some things to point out, I think, I talked with, Mr. Hayes is currently on the UP-TV Commission, and I spoke with Mr. Foster, who is our PEG coordinator. I think the library component is really strong. Not only are we seeing the library as an important part of our community and really part, well, an important part of our downtown and a part of our community, but we also, but there's also some changes with the library expansion. It's, the library is now being completely wired, and so they'll be able to, as I understand it, broadcast programs from the library onto the, to the cable access channel. And I think that, that then having a library staff person for that additional reason, I think is going to be, would be important to have. I think it's, it's good to have another committee, another member from our community onto the Urbana Public Television Commission. And what I would propose, although certainly I'm open for discussion on this, is that the, the composition or, and that the nomination be very similar to, or be the same as what we've got right now, in that people who would like to be on the commission would be, would submit their applications to the mayor, and the mayor would choose who he, he would like to appoint and bring that to council for ratification. For the library person, the library representative, I think it makes sense to have the, the library director propose some names to the mayor, and the mayor can choose then from the one, two, three, or however many people are, are proposed, or are nominated from the library director. I think it's a pretty simple, straightforward proposal, nothing too radical. But again, it just adds from, takes from seven to nine members, adding a library and a community member. And just for a point of comparison, Human Relations Commission and Plan Commission have nine members. So it would, I think, put the UP-TV Commission to a similar number of, of members. Thanks.
Any questions or comments? I have a question for legal. It appears what Ms. Wyman is proposing is that the mayor could only appoint, well, for the library staff member, the mayor could only appoint a person nominated by the director. Is that what you're proposing, Ms. Wyman?
It's actually just to be very similar to what you see in the, on the ordinance, if you look on the other side, the current ordinance. For example, the, what is it, the one, two, three, four, fifth line? The sentence that begins with one and then in parentheses, "One commissioner shall be appointed by the mayor with approval of the council from nominees named by the director of Parks and Recreation of the Urbana Park District," or the director's representative. So in a similar fashion, well, here, then the next sentence, "One commissioner," a simple way to add it.
Okay. Well, this is interesting. This is the first time I've ever looked at that, at this particular ordinance. And the question I have, given that we have an all-manic form of government where the mayor makes appointments and the council then advises and consents, is it proper for the city or the council by making a lot of constraint, the mayor's discretion in this way, by giving somebody else sort of the nom, power to nominate, you know, nominees that the, the mayor then has to choose from? My gut tells me that it's not, but it seems to be already in, in place in the current ordinance, and I'd just be interested in hearing from Mr. Holtz. Is that, do you see a problem with that? Well, is that in accordance with the state law and the way they direct municipal government to be set up?
Interesting question. I'll get back with you on it.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, I don't have any objection to forwarding it to council, and, and we can discuss it next week when we know more. Ms. Wyman.
Just one comment on that. If I recall correctly, the, the composition, the ordinance that discusses the composition or names the composition for the Urbana Human Relations Commission, I believe says that, that nominations can be made from the NAACP.
The student member?
Gosh, I was thinking it was for the general composition, that, that it would be, it wasn't just nominations from the NAACP or nominations from specific groups, but it made it open to it. But I may be recalling incorrectly. If Mr. Holtz would be able to bring back some ideas or just, I guess, more specific answer to Ms. Toronto's question, but I think the idea is since it's a staff person, or would, would, I'd probably be a staff person from the library that, that the director of the library or their representative might be better aware of it. But I would be happy to say that, that if we want to change it to something like, "The commissioner shall be appointed by the mayor with approval of council from nominees named by the director of the free library," or any other applicant, something like that.
Yeah.
To make it more open.
Yeah. I, I don't honestly know for sure that it's a problem or not, but if it is a problem, then we probably do need to revise some of the other language in it, so we can just deal with it next week. Otherwise, I don't have any objection in the way it is, as it's stated. All right. Mr. Mayor.
Just as far as, I was just noticing a little inconsistency in the existing ordinance where the Park District nominee is made by the director of Parks, the executive director, I suppose, and the school board is made by the board, which is two different processes. I wonder if we should elevate this to the level that needs to be done by the board of the school district or have the superintendent of schools, similar to what we've done with the Park District, the director of Parks. Because we've never had Urbana School District Board action to send, formally send a nominee here.
Okay.
So we might want to make that change as well.
I suppose we could make the, the change either way, or we could say that, that the board, whether it's the board of the Park District or the school district, or the library board, could make the nomination or it could be made... library board, could make the nomination, or it could be made by, or and/or made by the director. So that, I suppose if the director had, wanted to put staff people, but the board wanted perhaps a different person, you could, the mayor would have?
Two people to choose from.
Two people, three people, 37 people, and then could choose, choose, it just would create more, more opportunities.
They can do it that way, I mean, if we want us to bring it back to say the director or the board.
Or and/or the board, in that way, it's clear that both can make nominations.
That's fine with me. All right, do we, we have a, we don't have a motion yet, do we?
I would.
Okay, go, Ms. Wyman.
Thank you. I'd like to move that we send this, request that staff come back to, to the next council meeting with an ordinance draft change consistent with the discussion tonight regarding composition of the Urbana Public Television Commission.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. If there's no business, further business to come before us, we stand adjourned.